Good evening and welcome to the Gophstown Board of Selectmen's Meeting, October 24th, 2011. And I ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item in business is the correction or the acceptance of minutes from 10:11, 2011.
Motion to accept with some corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, corrections.
On page three. The second sentence, "it we did read it," that way it would expire on the 11th.
Third paragraph on page three?
Third paragraph on page three. First, it says Vice Chairman Kepasano said the line to contract. I just don't understand, it says "if we did read it."
If we did read it.
Maybe somebody with a better memory. I don't, the very first paragraph. We asked, do we want to have a discussion regarding repair of the VACON truck? Is that under CIP? Where would we add additional 125? And will there be a discussion on the drivetrain too? I don't recall if I was the one who...
Said all that?
Said all that.
Probably, probably you weren't the one that said that, but probably what that is, is what the conversation was, because we did have...
So, why don't we take out Vice Chairman Kepasano and just say the board discussed...
The discussion?
The board asked.
All of that came up. It was fashioned around now.
Okay.
And then on page 18, the last one I have. First paragraph.
Page 18?
Mm-hmm. Fourth line down from the top. It started, paragraph, the line before, Vice Chairman Kepasano asked the chief if he could get by on 14,300. And I believe it should be Selectmen Gross stated that's where the chief would pull money from overtime. If needed, that was, I don't think there was a question.
Okay.
Yeah, if it was a question, it'd probably be a response from the chief, which isn't in there anyway.
Right, I think as the conversation said, we acknowledged that there was some extra mon, could possibly be some extra money in there, but with the budget being very tight, if there was a, an issue on another line.
So replace, asked where would stated?
Yeah.
Stated that's where the chief would pull money from.
That's where, yeah.
That's all I have. I have a few.
Okay.
Let's see. Hold on. Third paragraph. Second sentence, I mean, yeah, second line. To provide services to the community of paramount importance. It was, I think it had permanent. And...
I'm sorry Scott, what, that was in the second paragraph?
Third.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Permanent is paramount.
Yep, paramount.
I just, I noticed this while reading this, Sue, that on page six, second to last paragraph, last sentence. Sue suggested that Selectmen Gross write a special article for the town report. I never, I probably was zoned out.
She said that.
I'm...
No, not a special, an article.
Oh, I know that.
For the town report.
Not a Warren, not a Warren article.
No, no, no.
And...
I take out special there and put an article.
And for the benefit of the chairman. Page 20. First, first paragraph, as I know that there was a degree of confusion last week as we were going to embark over to the school board meeting. They are meeting on the 17th. Chairman Devanz and Selectmen Gross then discuss the possibility of recessing the Board of Selectmen meeting and attending the schools meeting. So just, we did, we did talk about it.
We discussed it. No one confirmed it.
And I think that was it for me.
You just want to point out that it was discussed.
Yeah, exactly. I was so surprised.
I just assumed it would be on the agenda if we were going over, that's all. If it was confirmed, that's all.
I just had the...
I have no other correction.
I don't even know if that was a correction.
That wasn't.
That was just a statement.
I know that, I know that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the minutes with the changes?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, next item is announcements. And we have at least one announcement.
One in your packet and one there in front of you.
Yeah, on sheet, yeah.
Okay. I assume we have at least one.
Yes, we do.
Okay, there could be many. Thank you. Okay.
What in there?
We have an email from a Mr. Walter Cox to Kathy Ball, our town clerk. And the subject was the pumpkin festival. My wife and I spent our first weekend ever in New Hampshire. My daughter from Wilton took us to your festival. It was without a doubt the best small-town festival I have ever seen. Being from South Carolina, we have lots of festivals, but yours was the best. Congratulations to all who took part in it. I had to be, it had to be a tremendous amount of work and organization. Thanks for the experience I will never forget. Walter Cox. Thank you for all who helped to make that possible, especially...
The Main Street program.
Exactly. And we have another announcement. We have Halloween Safety Day, which is an annual event. It's the 14th one, 14th Annual Halloween Safety Day. It's to be held at Hanaford Parking Lot, October 30th, 2011, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There will be free balloons and necklace glow sticks for the kids. And just to remind everybody that the official trick-or-treat for the town of Gophstown is on October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. What other day should it be besides Halloween? And with that, are there any other announcements? 250th?
No, are we, are we meeting next Monday? But we're taking a...
Are you confused?
Four o'clock we started.
Are you confused? We did discuss this.
I know that, four o'clock.
And we're getting, we're getting...
I just wanted to remind the viewing audience, four o'clock.
Well, we didn't decide, you left it up to whatever the agenda could handle.
That's right.
It didn't necessarily have to be four, but we wouldn't start in earlier.
In four to six, that's right. And we were going to keep it as light as we possibly could, so that we could be properly attired for the occasion.
All right.
Okay? Yes.
I had a request from Jack Morehouse, our state emergency management field rep, to get onto Monday night's agenda to discuss the emergency generator at Midville.
I don't know what's on the agenda for that night.
It's late, I have, I don't have any appointments yet.
And that shouldn't be a long discussion.
Okay. Just prepare them for the...
The costumes?
And that we, we have to be out of here for...
And the earlier meeting.
Right. Okay, yes.
I've had a special communique from the Defense Department today that Captain America will be here for that Halloween.
Oh, he will, huh?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Good.
I'll bring my autograph book.
Good. Now, do we have any other announcements? Any other confusion that needs to be cleared up?
Anything else for the agenda?
I didn't know if Captain America was coming with Wonder Woman just out of curiosity.
I'll rush out and buy the uniform.
I don't know, but I would like to get back to the agenda. Okay? Thank you. The next item is public comment. And I was just wondering, I see three people in the audience, if anybody here was for public comment and they would like to make a pub, a comment. Because this is the time to do that. If not, we're going to, well, I don't know, we seem to be, oh, here he comes. But there is one more department head that we're looking, waiting for.
He won't be here.
Oh, he won't be here. So I am going to ask department heads if they are, were running a few minutes early and thought that, in the light that you might be able, like to leave a little earlier, if you were all ready to start this evening? Okay?
That looks like a yes.
So if you'd like to come forward.
I get the high seat. Thanks, guys.
Okay, you get, you get the most popular seat?
I'm the most popular department head, that's right.
Right.
We always need decoration at the front.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you were able to make it. And this evening, the board wanted to have a workshop with you to discuss the town manager form of government. And this, I don't know how many of you have ever worked under the town manager in the past? Some of you, I believe, have.
Six or seven of them.
How many is that?
Six or seven of them.
In what period of time?
Ten years.
Six or seven in ten years. Okay, so noted.
Same town?
Same city.
Same city.
Okay. And...
I had the opportunity to work with a town manager in a community that wasn't a city, but it was for many years, at least five years of work. So, that person had, was in that position for a while.
Right, okay. Well, with that, I didn't know if there was any specific questions that members of the board had that they wanted to start off with. So I guess I was going to open it up to that. Go right ahead.
What are your, I mean, this is interesting conversation, because it is a reflection upon our board. It's not just the philosophy of perhaps changing slightly how we do business, but it is, I guess it's, you have to speak freely as to how effective, you know, you think we may be in doing these things. But in terms of the major difference between a town manager and a town administrator, is that a town manager would actually supervise all of the department heads, and then that town manager in turn would be supervised by this, by the Board of Selectmen. In terms of, do you have any thoughts on whether or not you feel that it might be a better system, or efficient, or anything anecdotal whereby you'd be reporting to one person as opposed to five people? Any comments on that?
Carl?
You know, I'll, I'll, I'll speak up only because of, I've had the pleasure of serving under an incredibly good city manager, and for several years. And that experience was terrific. You know, it's, I think the general, the general sense, or the difference I've always had in my mind was, in a town government like we have, if you have an ineffective department head, that department's going to flounder. If you have a town manager that's ineffective, the whole town's going to flounder. So that's like the downside. And when I started my career in the city of Dover, they went through some unbelievable upheaval for six, seven years, where I don't think a city manager lasted more than two and a half years over that period of time. Because the city council was in flux, and I don't think they could get a consensus on what they were looking for. And the people that they ended up hiring just were not real effective leaders. Eventually, it settled down. And at the end of my tenure in Dover, we had a great city manager for, I think I was there for four years, serving under Paul Beecher. So that experience was, was refreshing to have, you know, you go from a period where no matter how good of a job you're doing, you can't get anything done, because the city manager just can't get, can't get things to happen, to, okay, now we got a really good city manager, and things started to click, and everything started to move really fast. So, you know, I think that's what boils down. It boils down to how good of a person do you got at the helm? If you have a good person at the helm, you're going to do great. If you have an ineffective person at the helm and a political body that's not willing to do the right things to deal with that, you know, you're in for a rough road.
Now, you said the council was in flux during the short terms of the others. How did that change under the last city manager you were under?
Well, everything calmed down. You know, I think, and again, hindsight's always 20/20, but looking back, that was a period of time, the mid-'80s, the economy was going into upheaval, there was a lot of political turmoil nationally, you know, it wasn't only in the city of Dover. Economically, things were in an uproar, and then things kind of settled down, you know, and people were ready for things to settle down. And, you know, it was, it was one of those, it was a period in time when, like I said, no matter what you did, nothing was going to be right. And the council was very divided, you know, the council was very much, some of the council felt things should go one way, and some felt things should go the other way. And, you know, it wasn't a new form of government, they'd had a city manager for years and years and years, it just was a period in political time when it was just rough. And I can tell you as a staff, you know, I was a couple layers down in management, but it was, it was tough. No matter how hard you tried, you couldn't get nothing done, so.
Any other comments on...
Working in a community that had, well, it was town administrator, but it was a town manager type of position, where that person answered to a, to a town council. What worked well for that particular town administrator or manager was the fact that, again, this person was chosen and vetted because she was the right person. And she was open to new ideas, innovations, to department heads that are coming up through. But that person also challenged the department heads to, to look out what's, what's always innovative, and was, was pushing on a constant basis. So the position kept us sharp in a sense, but also it kept the focus on what needed to be done from the council. The council's goals, or the Selectmen's goals at that point, were then concentrated to one person in one position, versus trying to get your goals out to a number of department heads, and try to keep that straight. Having a town manager, that manager knows the goals, what, what the Selectmen want, and keeps beating that drum to, to the department heads. So the mission has never, never skipped over at, at that point. But like echoing what Carl says, if you get, like anywhere from the department head position up to town manager position, you get the wrong person in there, and you, you're going to have problems. And it's, and it's really important to pick that right person in this way. Many, many towns, they, they spend, you know, a lot of, a lot of money and funds on independent, independent consultants to come in and help, help with that process. They're vetted through the department heads, doing interviews with the department heads, and people from the, from the outside, just, just to make sure they fit well in the community. But I think in a community like ours, you've got to think that so much is going on on day, day-to-day basis. It could be tough to try to keep the Selectmen in the loop as much as they'd like to be, or we'd like to have the Selectmen in the loop, and it's tough. Because there's so many things that we're juggling on a day-to-day basis. Versus if we could just, you know, if we're echoing our issues to a town manager, you know, the right town manager, then I think, I think the mission will be met, and the day-to-day operations are going to run smoother, because they're happening very fast.
And you're referring to authority to enter into contracts and lease RFPs? That's, that's done more, could be done quicker through the one person, rather than waiting for a pair of some session of the board?
It could be. It's, in my particular case, it was still, came up to the, to the town council to make that particular decision, but they, but the council also knew that the recommendation was, was coming from the town manager.
Yes.
And the town manager's job was to make sure that the process was done, was done correctly within policy. And it all looked good. And from time to time, bids would come in, and, and the town manager would go, geez, I got some questions on this that might, the council will have questions on. And it was that, those questions that would help us in the presentation to get the final approval, and things would go quicker then.
Okay, but, so what, that form of government, though, was not a true Selectmen, Town Manager form of government? Actually neither the one that you worked under, or the one that Carl worked on?
Well, the town, the town, it was, it was Derry when it was, when it was there. The Derry had, had evolved many ways. They had a mayor, then that didn't work out, and then they went to a town administrator.
Right.
In all sense, was a town, town manager in, in the function of it, in the protections of that position.
So they adopted Chapter 37?
Correct.
See, people can adopt 37 and still call it a town administrator.
Many communities do that.
You can call it whatever you want to call it. But the difference, I think, that you're trying to get to is Chapter 37 versus no Chapter 37.
Exactly. And Derry, for those who aren't aware, for quite a while, went through a tremendous amount of turmoil, turmoil, and upheaval, and internal issues regarding its former government, as, as you, as you mentioned. And there was quite a bit of turnover on those managers for quite a while. One of the executive counselors became town manager for a while, well, whatever you wanted to call it, for a while.
Yes. And I think it was at that point on where the position settled into the role that it is in today. And I, I don't know who the town, town administrator is now in, in Derry, but I know it took, it took some time to get that position identified, and the roles identified. But after that was set, I think it set, it set the road on, on that position.
Right, okay.
Just a quick question for anyone who wants to... Well, here, from both of you, I guess is that, is there's a transition period when they were switching over, is that correct? And when you brought in the town manager, was that someone from within the system, or someone outside? I mean, I'm just wondering why, it's, I mean, why do you think there were difficulties within the transition? That's all. From my experience, it was never anybody from with inside. It was always a national search, outside candidates. And, you know, I wasn't part of the inside, but if I had to guess, the demise of every manager that I saw come and go was, they politically were at odds with the council, you know, a voting block of the council that had enough votes to get rid of them. It, it always came down to a power struggle at the end of the day, and the manager never survived it for long.
I believe in Derry, it was, there was a point where the administrator was leaving, and they were going through a charter change, and actually they went to a mayoral form of government, and then after attempted that, that failed, and then it did evolve into the town, town administrator, or town manager form of government, government. So you're right, there was some growing, there was some definite growing pains within, within Town Hall. But I, but I think there was a lot of political pull, one way or another, on, on which way they were going to go with it. And I think over time, it just evolved into what it is. And I believe what it, the way it works now, it works, but they, I believe Derry's got a number of counselors too. They've got, I believe, seven, at least seven or eight counselors. They've got a big political board on.
Under, under our current system, obviously, you know, with a, with a board of five people, there could, there are instances in which a vote is 3-2. It could be a vote of 3-2 on a, something like a budget, or a philosophy on, on a budget. That could, that could still happen even with, if you had a town manager or a town administrator. But would, would you envision it being a little bit more streamlined, or easier for you to understand what the vision of, is of a Board of Selectmen, because it's coming from one person who's then talking to you as opposed to five?
Absolutely. I don't even have the heads. I spoke to several of my colleagues in surrounding communities that have both, have had Selectmen with the manager or the administrator, and it's gone through a variation. Their main point was, as they both said earlier, it's the person in that position. And then the power that's granted to that person from the Board of Selectmen. With a strong background in those, making those decisions, that's important for the streamlining of the operations day-to-day. And that was their main thrust. And again, they said, had great experiences and have had really bad experiences, and it depends on the person in that position.
No, in reading through the RSA 37 colon 6, Powers and Duties of a Town Manager, there are, as you know, I'm sure most of you have, have read this, there are some significant differences. But there's also, I think, some opportunity to not go full bore in terms of power to a town manager. The first one, it says to organize, continue, or discontinue...
Which section are you in?
37 colon 6. Powers and duties in particular. Roman numeral one. To organize, continue, or discontinue from time to time such departments as the Selectmen may from time to time determine. So I, I take from that, that if there were a situation, I'll just give an example, a police department, where there was an opportunity to reorganize the department, I think that would be the prerogative of the Selectmen, working with the manager to say, okay, is that something we want to pursue or not pursue? I don't see that, I don't necessarily think that a Board of Selectmen would be giving up any responsibilities or rights to have a say in that, in that reorganization. And then as you go further down, Roman numeral seven, to have charge, control, and supervision, comma, subject to the direction of the Selectmen, and to the biros of the town, if any, of the following matters. And it lists, you know, probably eight or nine, the management of municipal water, that doesn't really affect us, construction, maintenance, and repairing of all town buildings and town roads, highways, sidewalks, and bridges, purchase of supplies, police and fire departments of the town, if any, and it goes on and on. And I think, I go back to those key words, subject to the direction of the Selectmen, and to the biros of the town. So I think there's enough, in my reading of this statute, there's enough there that says that the town manager, although that by statute, they have the right and ability to hire and fire, if, there was also a tremendous amount of, I guess, checks and balances that the Selectmen, in my review of this, still have that prerogative to direct that manager as to how, how they, how they see fit. And then it goes on, Roman numeral eight, to administer the poor relief of the town, either directly or through a person or persons appointed by him, and under the supervision of the Selectmen. And the next one, to perform such other duties consistent with the office as may be required of him by vote of the Selectmen. So it seems to me that there is a lot of, you don't have to give, you don't relinquish all power as a Board of Selectmen. If I go down to 37, colon 7, approval of vouchers, the town manager may approve vouchers for obligations incurred by any department. And then it goes further down to say, the Selectmen may themselves approve such vouchers or authorize the approval of some, some other person. I just, you know, throughout this document, I still see just a lot of opportunity for Selectmen not to give up all power, that there is a checks and balances. And then ultimately, 37, 13, which is revocation. If it doesn't work out, you can revoke it.
And this town has done that before.
Yeah. So then I, I look at, I took a look at, at this article, that was in Town and City, and I'm sure we, most of us got that. On the con side, I looked at the second, the last Q and A. Did the Selectmen lose some of their authority under a Town Manager form of government? Yes. This is an important distinction between the Town Manager position and Town Administrator position. By adopting a Town Manager form of government, the legislative body is placing some of the authority that would otherwise be held by the Selectmen into the hands of a non-elected official. While the Town Manager is subject to the directions and supervision of the Selectmen, he or she assumes several important duties. For example, the Town Manager becomes the administrative head of all departments, and has the authority to hire and fire employees under his or her control and to set their salaries. So that's a... So that's a, that's a, you know, for whatever. And then the other key distinction that I saw was on the following page. Is there any difference between the town manager, the town administrator in the area of hiring and termination? And in the middle of the way through, it says, this is not the case with the town manager position who must be selected based upon experience and training in the job. In the case of termination, that's where I wanted to get to, a town manager may be removed by the selectmen anytime for cause. This is in contrast to a town administrator who is an employee at will and who may be removed with or without notice or cause. So in employment sectors, at will and for cause are pretty different. Police and fire chiefs must be removed for cause, whereas most other department heads do not have that. They are at-will employees.
Unless they have individual contracts.
Unless they have an individual contract. That being the case, I don't get overly concerned about that because I, in my opinion, we better have a really good reason and a documented reason why someone is not doing their job for us to terminate them from employment. My other, my other question, and this is something that has kind of bothered me a bit since being on the board, is I, I've never really gotten a warm and fuzzy that our board, or for that matter, I don't know any other boards, I've never served on another board in another town, selectmen. The, the type of feedback that you get on a performance evaluation basis. You're responsible for conducting performance evaluations on all of your direct reports. And I just, I, I've never really been pleased with the level of feedback that we provide department heads in terms of a formal evaluation. Which, if there was a town manager, that would be an expected evaluation process, in, in my opinion. To me, that would be a, a benefit of going with a town manager is that that town manager would be ultimately responsible for doing your performance appraisals. I also think that although this board or any board of selectmen has the opportunity to distinguish department heads based upon their performance and to, I guess, differentiate performance based upon the quality of the job that was done in a given year. I don't, I, I don't get a warm fuzzy that we are as good as that. I think, I think the system would be a little bit more efficient if there was a manager who could, who, who could do that. Again, with the support of a board of selectmen, that's gonna, that would support that individual to make sure that they did differentiate performance. So that's all I, that's all, really all I have. But I would, my question to you is, do you think that a town manager form of government, if you had a singular boss, singular supervisor, one person, do you think you'd get better feedback in terms of pros and, no, good and bad, in terms of how you're doing for your, in your performance? And I'll ask that to all of you.
I think we would. I think we, we would get feedback quicker in, in that sense. And I, I know you all have a, you have a busy, busy schedule and, and you have other jobs. So, but we, it seems like on a day-to-day basis, we're always trying to touch base with, say Sue, in this particular case, just on whatever's going on during the day. So we can get instant feedback on, you know, how we're doing on that or what we need to do to change what we need to get done. So I, I think just having the, the quicker feedback would be helpful. That, that would be a plus versus, you know, if, if the selectmen came down with a performance evaluation, what's that based on? You know, because we don't see that often, other than in meetings, and it's more of a formal, formal environment like this. Versus closed doors or in, in department head meetings, you know, where we're throwing ideas around. So I think that that kind of rapid feedback would be helpful.
I think it would be dependent on who you're interacting with and perhaps even the day before, what you interacted with. If there was headbutting that day and, you know, defending your department over a budget or something of that sort. It may reflect in your, your, your evaluation or, good or bad. That would be, again, person-dependent, I think.
I, I agree with Chief O'Brien. You know, the, the feedback and the immediate feedback would be a great thing. But I, I did want to just touch on the one thing you said, Scott, when, and it's the difference between at-will and for cause. And again, it highlights the, if, if a board of selectmen, you'd want to be very careful and make it very clear with whoever the manager was, what duties exactly you were delegating. Because I, I can almost put my finger on the exact difference of opinion over what the duties were between the elected folks and the manager that ultimately led to the demise of the system. So it, because it, you know, the, in the case of a manager, there's a certain amount of law that they interpret and they assume. This is what I have control over and an elected body, and not particularly the elected body that puts that manager in position, but maybe the one that gets voted in a couple of years later. There's a difference of opinion of what those duties entail and that's what always leads to the, to the, the problem. And then when it's at-will, it's fairly easy to resolve. But when it's for cause, I mean, think about your position. You're struggling with, with doing performance evaluations. Even though you're only going to have a manager to deal with, at cause dictates a paper trail with a performance evaluation that a majority of the board agrees to. So it's, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty high hurdle. And, and don't, don't misinterpret these. I would love to have a town manager. It would, I believe it would make my life so easy, so much easier. So I, I'm not at all opposed to going that direction, but it, it's a different, it's a different way of operating. Don't take it lightly.
No, that's fine, Mr. Chair. I mean, Diane is still with, I mean, no matter what happens, the library trustees still address the.
She's not impacted by it.
You're not impacted by this.
But she would have to deal with a town manager. She would have to deal with a town manager instead of a town administrator.
But the town manager would not evaluate her position. That's the trustees.
No, no, I understand. But still, the interaction would be with a town manager and not a town administrator.
I would get along with Sue no matter what her title was.
I'm curious as to what your opinion is on it and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be have to ask Sue her opinion as well, but what's your take?
I talked to some of my colleagues who work under this form of government and it doesn't really affect the library. The, you know, state statute is so different for public libraries in New Hampshire. You know, I would still report to my board of trustees. I would still, things remain the same for a public library based on my understanding, so.
Okay, Nick, you have a question.
Mr. Chair, for ICMA.
Okay.
I, Sue is technically a department head and if, if, I mean, I hope you don't feel like we're putting you on the spot, but it, it is important to hear.
Well, you are.
Well, we, we're putting the other department heads on the spot too, to get their assessment. That's what we have in this workshop or meeting.
Well, I belong to ICMA and the New Hampshire Professional Managers Association. And in our profession, that is the form of government of choice. Because of the efficiencies they see in it and getting the governing body to the higher level of doing the policymaking and giving the specific direction to town manager. I sent out questions to different town managers who work with a board of selectmen regarding the role. And it's just as diverse as you can imagine. The selectmen's role, how does that change when it comes to staff? How does it change when it comes to collective bargaining? How does it change when it comes to, what was the other one? Hiring and firing? And diverse answers on some of those subjects. So I have to agree with Selectman Gross's interpretation, the selectmen retain a lot of authority in the, in the RSA's. But it seems to me the ones that I know that are very successful, they use a collaborative approach anyway. And they are keeping, even if they have the hiring and firing authority, they keep their boards abreast of what's going on. And some of them even involve them in the, you know, if it's a department head level position, involve them in the interview process when it comes down to the final three candidates. So there is still quite a bit of involvement from what I can see by the board of selectmen in the process. But the efficiencies of one person communicating and making the day-to-day decisions. But they keep, again, they collaborate with their boards.
Nick?
Thank you. I just, I know Selectman Gross had gone through the various points under that section seven that you spoke of to have charge, control and supervision. I just did want to point out on the next page that they supersede.
Which page do you want me to?
It's at the very bottom of page two. In municipalities adopting the provisions thereof, town manager shall supersede any board of commissioners or other supervisory officer or officers previously established, elected or appointed to have superintendence of any of the matters specified in the foregoing paragraph. So one thing to keep in mind, that our sewer commission would, would no longer be in charge. That would be the town manager. Parks and Rec Commission would no longer be in charge. And then under I, if we adopted under RSA two eighty-nine, cemetery trustees as well could be included in that town manager position. That's the one thing that you have the option of. But those other commissions would basically be superseded by the town manager. So I just wanted to point that out.
Right, okay, thank you. And I guess though, before we go any further at this point though, I guess, the question though, and I, I don't know if this is the proper time though. I guess I, the question that I have is what do members of the board and what, what do they envision? The advantages of a town manager. I guess the question though that I have is, we have the ability to, by vote, to give Sue just about any authority that we want to give her and by vote, we can take it away from her. So I guess the question I have is to go through a, a change like this is, what, what are your expectations of going to adopting the statute for a town manager form of government statutorily? Because there statutorily, there are things that are given, as Selectman Campasano pointed out. And in the sections that you quoted from, Scott, earlier on it, what you, if you go to number two of that thirty-six, colon, six, you talked about number one was to organize, continue or discontinue from time to time such departments as a selectmen may from time to time determine. Well, that sounds pretty innocuous. But when you get to number two, to appoint upon merit and fitness alone and to remove all subordinate officers and employees under his control and to fix their compensation. Okay? So what the board of selectmen is giving up, the ability to fix compensation for these employees that we have no control over. I mean, if a person in a community has a problem with something at Public Works or Police Department or the Fire Department, they call the selectmen. Okay? From now, once you have the town manager form of government and somebody calls us, we have absolutely nothing to do with it. The only thing I could do is bring it up to the town manager. Town manager could tell me where to go. No, town manager could say to me, you know.
I asked that question too when I was surveying other town managers and how do they handle, how do selectmen handle constituent complaints? And they said, they either, they email me or they call me or they bring it up at a meeting and I look into it and I get back to them.
Well, I, I understand that, but, but the point I'm making is that.
I think you're still responsible to your constituents.
We're responsible to constituents, but we don't have the direct supervision anymore. The only supervision we have, and what happens now? What happens, sort of, everybody understands as, was brought up by, by Nick earlier and one, I think, one of the other chiefs, department heads. Down the road, other boards, okay? Because a town manager is going to have a contract. Okay? Boards of selectmen, when you become more policy than more than a hands-on, you have the tendency to be less involved. You go through the process, you hire a town manager, you're going to go through the contract with a town manager. You may not even know, the board of selectmen may not even be fully aware of what they're signing in that contract. Because I'll tell you right now, what's the organization that you belong to, Sue?
New Hampshire Managers Association.
Do they have workshops for town, for managers on how to negotiate your contract?
We've had those, yes.
Thank you. So they have professional workshops on managers of how to negotiate a contract. And as was brought up, we are busy, we have jobs, we have interaction only on meetings. So when we go to the table to negotiate a contract with a town manager, we're at a disadvantage. Okay? Just a couple of points to ponder.
If I could jump in. Sure. I, I think what you're, we're alluding, alluding to is, is kind of like, I look at my organizational chart in my department. And of course, you have, you always have the, the department head or fire chief. And then we have levels of officers under, under the fire chief. In this particular case, we got a deputy chief and then a captain and we've got lieutenants. And under the, those persons, they've got subordinates. So the way it works, it doesn't necessarily mean that I, that I don't know what's going on on the floor. My, my guys might say that, but, but, but I, I feel I do know what's going on the floor. And they can keep me informed of what's going on and what's needed and what's not needed. But because of, we call span of control, that could be overwhelming. And because of those, because of the work my officers do, they, they kind of filter what's, what's needed for the organization. Because I keep, I keep them informed on what our mission and vision is. And that, because of that, they keep the whole group cohesive and moving on and, and working as, as a group. Like anything else, if that breaks down, then you obviously have an issue. But there's always communication going back and forth. And I don't feel, like especially in my organization, that I'm missing out from anything that's, that's going on down, down at that lower level. And again, it ties into finding that right person. And that could work here too, where with that right person, you're not going to feel left out. You're gonna, you're gonna have that, that conduit of communication where you'll have an idea of what's going on in each department. But again, will you have the responsibility of seeking out that department and trying to find time with that department to, to, to find that communication and get that information? Or can you just rely on, on your manager to do that for you? And in efficiency way, it almost sounds, sounds better because again, that span of control is now focused one way for you. Versus, you know, who, who do I speak to now and, and get that feedback? Does it still say that, that communities that have town managers or that form of government, does that mean that, that excludes you from, from visiting a department? No, I mean, we always, we always welcome that, or I always do. That way, the people that are, most people that are informed, you make, make well-informed decisions. I don't think that'll change, especially with a group like this. But does it, I don't know if it'll exclude anybody.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, basically, I like the arrangement as we have now for the following reason. We're, I, I sense we're very blessed with the amount of our, the talent that we have as department heads now. And what I see in the, the daily meet, I see that could occur in our daily meetings with you, that you hold. I see collaboration and coordination take place on a, a free basis. And if you were to, any one of you were to suggest something that would come forward to the board, you're getting good feedback from the other department heads based on their experience before you approached the board with some issue. And I, I see that as occurring because of our form of government with your relationships reporting to us. Whereas if you were to report to one person, you may not get the cooperation so freely from your, from your peers, your other department. you may not get the cooperation so freely from your, from your peers, your other department heads, because of the natural friction that takes place. If two of you were always criticizing a third person, over time, that town manager forms an opinion because of that. It works, you know, so the, I see the collaboration as a positive attribute as you work together in your meetings and presenting issues to this board.
I'd just like to make a little-
Yeah, I'd just like to make a little comment. And I think what we're talking a lot, what we're talking about here is the challenge of leadership. And I do agree with Selectman Pierce. When I look at the department heads here, I think that this town is truly blessed. I really think you guys do a great, everyone does a great job. And part, and part of being, part of leadership is to surround yourself with good people. And going, now going back to talking about this form, you know, this type of form of government, is that, as Chief spoke here, is that part of it, you want to create that vision, you want to communicate it, and you want to be able to execute it. And part of that is that, that the key word in there is communication. I think people get a little worried about that a little bit when we talk, whenever there's change, because there's a natural resistance to change. That's, that's a normal piece that's out there. And when I look around, I see the talent that's here, and I look at, and you hear people talking about vision, how they want to communicate, how they want to work through interdepartment, and they're looking for responsiveness, and they're looking for feedback. I would tell you, the form that we have now doesn't quite fulfill that. And it's not because, as a board, that people, that the board is not doing the best it can, but you also have a board that's meeting once a week, where they might be looking for that execution. And I'll throw that out there, or they're looking for that feedback on, they might be needing on a daily basis. Sometimes Monday doesn't suffice. And four hours of us coming in, or three hours, four hours a week, doesn't suffice in that day-to-day operation. But, but probably works very well in regards to policy and direction where you want to go overall. But from the day-to-day details and the day-to-day running, I would say that's, that's a challenge. And part of the, and what we're talking about here is that challenge, is it better if we, in other words, it's not taking that authoritative piece, part out of the elected board, but it's bringing it more towards those department heads a little bit for the, for the fine tuning of the execution of what needs to be done. And I think that has a lot of merit. I think that's, and that's the part I don't think people should be scared of. It's a little bit of a change. But it, like I say, once again, when you look at department heads and you surround yourself with the right people, and they're communicating the matters that they're doing, I think there's only, you know, all you're going to see there is a clearer vision, a more executed vision, and as far as being quicker. And I think you're going to have that, you're going to look at that response time, and I think that's what the public is looking for.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Goffstown is the largest town or municipality in the state with a Board of Selectmen form of government, if I'm not mistaken. There are plenty of other smaller communities that, that have either mayor or have town councils, et cetera. It's my opinion that, that Goffstown has grown to a point where it needs a better, a more streamlined system, which I think a town manager could, could bring. I also want to, I know this is about losing some control, but, you know, sometimes, you know, giving up control or authority is a good thing for the constituents and for the people in the town. I also want to throw out a couple of ideas and notions that what happens if, you know, we talk about a strong or a weak town manager. What about a strong or a weak Board of Selectmen? What about a Board of Selectmen that maybe changes their position every other month? And it's always a three-two vote, and the department heads don't know where to go because things keep changing? Or what happens when new people get elected and then all, every single time, the direction changes? And, you know, you're looking at any good organization, you want to see some consistency, a clear direction. You always have deviations here and there. But, you know, we're making some assumptions that, that if you have a strong Board of Selectmen, you'll give that good, that good message to the department heads, and they'll be able to execute it. That's an assumption. In two to three years, we could have a weak Board of Selectmen. And the other thing with regard to constituent services is that technically, as we all know, as individual Selectmen, we certainly are sounding board for people. We bring issues to the board, but we only act as a group, as a board. We don't have any authority to tell a department head what they should or should not do. Certainly, we, we might try to influence it, but we, the only authority that we have is when we, we all collectively vote. And, and again, I, I guess, David, I would respectfully disagree with the notion, yeah, with that, that they work so well as a team now, and they wouldn't work well under a town manager. I have always worked where I have a boss and there's a chain of command. I don't, I don't have five bosses. I have one boss. And I, and I have been blessed to have worked on, you know, the majority of my career with very good people, and we work collaboratively. I think that can still, that still can continue. I also think that anytime you're, I, I call my peers all the time when I have, when I have a problem that I'm not 100% sure, and that I want to get their opinion before I talk to my boss about it or my boss's boss. So, I don't necessarily think that's a, that's a flip, a bad thing. But what I do think that it brings is a greater degree of accountability. And then what I've seen, and again, it's no disrespect to anybody in this room, is that because there's five people, I think it's easier for it, for it, for the message to get lost or for things maybe not to be 100% in the same, in the same direction. One example that I would, budgets, we're going through that process now. It'd be really easy to say, okay, town manager, here's what we're looking to do. You execute it, you work in your staff meetings, you come up with a budget, and it is what it is, you know, and we'll come back, we'll take a look at it. But a lot of that nitty-gritty, dirty, you know, that stuff we spent hours and hours on, really, it would be far less. So, in my opinion, I'm not afraid of this. I do think that there is plenty of statutory authority for a Board of Selectmen. But I think this is a good first step to see how well we're functioning. And if it doesn't work out, you can rescind it. I guess Goffstown did that once before. But personally, I see Goffstown as getting so big, I, I think we're, we're even beyond a town manager. I think we're, we need something far different than that, but I think this is a first step in that process.
A couple of things. I first wanted to address Selectman Gross. One of the, one of the issues, when you mentioned there's always the three to two, or the, the responsiveness to the voters is the one thing that keeps a Board of Selectmen in check. If, if the board is going in a direction that the town doesn't like as a whole, they, at the next election, they can make that message very clear by voting out whoever's up for reelection. When a town manager, and present company excluded, I'm talking that, you know, that town manager who may be here someday, can embark on a direction because of support from a majority of the board, but there's no accountability to the voters, if you will. The voters can't vote out the town manager. The, and the board, you can change two people, but as a group, that town manager just keeps going forward with that direction. They're, in our defense, not in our defense, but for us to remove anyone, it takes a majority of the board. And as you've seen, that's, that's a difficult thing. I mean, that, I may have something against a particular department head or a particular employee, but I can't remove someone unless I get this entire board to agree. And a town manager might not like an individual, and they'll work to remove that person. And we don't have a say in that, because the town manager has the ability to make those decisions. I answered this with an open mind. I really want to see where it goes, the pros and the cons. But the one question I keep coming back to is why the change? Convince me that what we're doing, and I've heard, well, we have more important things to do than these day-to-day, weekly things, such as when we're in budget season, we go till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock. But I remember an entire summer of leaving here at 8 o'clock, 7:30. If there are other things this board should be doing, what's stopping us? If we want to do evaluations of our department head, why aren't we? I know we brought it up. It was a goal. It was dropped. So, I guess I need to be convinced, what is it we're not doing now? What is it that we would have free, do we want, is our goal to meet once every two weeks? Is that, is that why we want a town manager to lessen our work so we don't have to meet as often? Is our goal, is there a list of things that we're not doing simply because we're caught up in all of this other stuff that we would then start doing? I'm trying to figure out why. Is, when things like the Glen Lake-
If you want, I could respond to that. Okay.
The Glen Lake ordinance change, you know, we debated that. Would that not come to us anymore? Would that go to the town manager? The-
Ordinance is given to the Selectmen.
Okay. The interminable agreement with the Co-op in Concord. When we talked about the contract, and would that come to the Board of Selectmen, or would the town manager take care of that?
I think you need, there are some areas, as you read in here, that say, at the direction of the Board of Selectmen. I think some really important issues need to come to the board level still. And I think that's a substantial one, the contract with the Co-op. And I think that needed to be, that would need to be vetted in a public forum.
If I may just, I think one thing going forward, however this ends up, one of the things that Select Chairman Devans brought up may be a way to go is, if this is something where we want to do, why not give our town administrator these powers and see how it works? Then when we go to town meeting, we can say, you know what, we've been trying this for a while. It really works. We'd like you to support it and vote it in. And if it doesn't, we don't have to go back to a vote. We don't, I mean, we avoid. So, just as a compromise, it may be possible to do this and see how it works, and see if we can take on those other things that we're not doing now and-
For one, again, I guess I'll have to, we all like each other, obviously, but we disagree on things. I think it would be a better world, a better Goffstown, if we didn't have all these interchangeable parts with a sewer commission, Parks and Rec Commission. And they do great work, don't get me wrong. But it, it's very cumbersome. A town of 18,000 people, all these different committees and commissions. We've got needs for infrastructure, whether it be sewer or water, and it takes a very, I mean, with our water precincts and with sewer, it's a very cumbersome process. And 18,000 people is quite a bit. What could we be doing that we have not done? I think, I would, I think so many times what we do, sometimes we get bogged down on some things that I think a manager, if a manager's had to do it, it would be, we'd be better off focusing on how do we bring business in and try to work with the state, economic development. And let's face it, we, we really don't, I think we could do a better, a much better job in that respect. Our, our pay policies and our insurance, and I think we could do a better job policy-wise on, on direction there. And we, you know, in that respect, I think we could do a hell of a lot better job in terms of feedback for our department heads. I mean, I was the one who, for the last three years, has wanted evaluations and wrote, actually tried to start that process, and it get, so for me, that shows a lack of accountability on our board's part that we don't do that. It really does bother me. And when I see that, I'm like, well, I know that a town manager, that would be their job. I think budgeting is another, is another thing that, that the town manager could, could be involved a lot in. I've had the benefit of, of working in an environment, when I served on the school board, of having a superintendent of schools. And the, it's very similar in this, in the sense that the superintendent of schools does the hiring and firing of, of teachers, et cetera. I can tell you, based upon my seven years on, on that board, no teacher ever got fired or dismissed or any disciplinary action without the board being completely aware of what was going on. The board gets involved in all budgetary items, anything, any hiring of principals, vice principals, et cetera, all gets vetted through, key positions all gets vetted through a board. So, I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not terribly concerned. I think we'll be better for it. I'm not, I'm not, if, if the, if the support is not there, and it sounds like it's not, I would, I do think it's something that we should try. In the interim, we do have the authority to do that. And at least we could then say, you know what, we tried it, you know, for a year where we directed our administrator to act in this capacity. I think that's a healthy compromise. Is that there's, there's always a reluctance to change, and if that's a, a manner in which the board feels more comfortable that they can, you know, have a greater control over what they want to give up and what they want to retain, that's fine. I think that's better than nothing.
Okay. I guess, from my perspective, okay, Scott, you say that Goffstown is the biggest town that has a selectman form of government. And Goffstown-
That I'm aware of.
That you're aware of. Okay. Whether or not, okay, and you look at that as a negative. I don't look at that as a negative. I look at it as a positive. Okay? Several, several reasons. Number one. This form of government that we have, okay, is more closer to the electorate than a manager form of government, as a couple of issues were brought out before. Is it difficult? Does it have its issues? It all depends on what your perspective is. I mean, you talk about efficiencies, okay? Well, you know, when you talk about efficiencies, perhaps a person might look and say, gee, even the voters having elections are inefficiencies. Okay? I don't look at it that way. I look at all of these things, are the way we operate. It's the way we get, we're closer to the community. And one of the things that people always say about Goffstown, ever since I've been in Goffstown, and people that came here before me, it's the uniqueness about Goffstown, it has the small-town characteristics. It's just, I mean, look what just went through with the Pumpkin Fest. Okay? Look what we've achieved with a Main Street program that gets funded through annually through a town meeting form of government. Okay?
Partially.
Well, the fifteen, the-
Helps.
It's fifteen thousand dollars.
They might scream if they heard. That's why I say that.
But from the very beginning, okay? When their outside form of funds goes down, it is, okay? But we've successfully funded them. Okay? Because we all work together as a community. I look at, looking to get, working together as a community, as working together as this team that you all talk about. Okay? I see Sue on this board, okay? The great department heads that we have, that every member of this board just talked about, okay? Were hired by a Board of Selectmen. Sue is here through a Board of Selectmen. She was originally hired by a Board of Selectmen as what position? Was it welfare?
Welfare and support services.
Okay. I see the hard work, okay, that we have to do. Okay? You know, you go back to what is the basis of our democracy. Okay? You can't take things for granted. You have to get involved, and you have to be vigilant. Okay? I'm self-employed, and I put a lot of work outside of my business. Okay? To be involved in what I like to do. I enjoy, I feel that that's, in order to have the type of life that I have in this community, you need to be involved in it. And this is, this is part of the amount that you have. I don't have, and perhaps Goffstown, I look at Goffstown being what it is because of the, of the form of government that we have. The uniqueness. Okay? I don't, I don't buy, well, there's no other one like this, and everybody else has changed, so we should change too. I don't buy that. I think that's what makes us unique. Steve?
I don't think anyone's saying that this form of government is doing poorly, but I think, or at least, I'm just going to stick to myself here. I think it can be improved upon in regards to this. I mean, I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that I've experienced over the three years I've been here. And I'll just talk about time allocations. We come in as a board, and we're a part-time board, and we spend, you know, we're here on Mondays. I, I don't think anyone would argue that if someone was here 40 hours a week with their finger on their pulse and their arms around the situation, that they could react quicker, faster, and we'd have a better response. There's no doubt about that. I think also in my time here, I, I can't tell you how many times I've come and knocked on Sue's door, and I'm asking her about certain things. I'm sure when I left there, someone else came in and went, hey, Sue, what about this also? And same with going into all the different departments. And you have to look at that and what that means in how those resources are being utilized, and could they, could those times be, be someplace else? So, in other words, we're not talking drastic changes. We're just talking improvements upon what we currently have. So in other words, we're not talking drastic changes, we're just talking improvements upon what we currently have. And I think, so when you talk about, well, you know, I think what Selectman Gross is saying, that geez, we're one of the smallest, we're one of the largest communities with still this form of government, it doesn't mean because someone else, that because someone else, everyone else is doing it, that we should do it. But it also doesn't mean, hey, by the way, we shouldn't also. I mean, I mean, part of it, what usually, what that usually trends and talks to is that other communities have gone through this process. They have looked at it and they're still utilizing it because they could reverse that process, okay? So it doesn't mean, so, I mean, I think we should, you should look at that, in other words, the, some people, see, other communities have traveled down these roads. If they found that it didn't work, it wasn't worth the while, they would reverse those processes. I think we've heard in several cases where there were transitions. And once again, all I, all I see this as, as an improvement upon what I think is good. I believe there is that small-town feel, but what, I'm just saying that, you know, the things behind the scenes where we slow down because we're not here as a full-time, as a full-time board. And I think that, I think, I think it'd be good for the community, I think it'd be more responsive. And so I wouldn't dismiss it in regards of what you were speaking about a little bit there, that's all.
You guys have any questions of us?
Oh, and just one last thing, I don't think it's a bad thing to put in front of the voters to, to take a vote on this. I mean, that's one of the things, like, sometimes we sit here and we're saying, hey, we're making these decisions. I look at this one also as that, I think that it does deserve to go in front, go in front for, you know, on a ballot and look at it as an article for people to look at and wait and see where it goes. And let that, and let that discussion go out into the public forum and let people decide on that one. That's just one of the pieces I look at also.
And that's one of the hardest things is that, you know, let, let that conversation be had, let the community decide whether they're satisfied. I mean, is it a referendum on our board? Maybe it is, you know, to a degree, but it's, it's a great way to engage the community in, you know, are you satisfied with how things are going and could it, you know, do you think that a manager might be a better route to go? And, you know, I'll be candid, I've heard, I've talked to people who think that it should go that way and I've talked to other people who say, no. They made the argument that Nick did, I'd rather, I'd rather, I don't want to see a non-elected person have so much power, et cetera, et cetera. But then again, it's that, it's that level of discussion which I think is, is good, it's healthy, you know?
Do you have any comments, Dave?
Yes, just picking up one point. I would envision writing the voter's guide for such an article would be difficult with the diversity of our opinions.
Counterpoint.
Yes. It'd be five different opinions in there for the voters to consider, but I say that half in jest, but it would be difficult.
You know, the interesting, if I, if I could, and I don't think anybody here, you know, my reading of the tea leaves from the department heads actually was that it seemed as if they would be inclined to see a town manager. That's kind of what I, what I got out of it, I'm not going to put you on the spot to say so, but albeit with a caveat that it needs to be the right person. But arguably, I could make the same thing. The only way this is successful is that you have five, at least, you know, four hopefully very strong people. And I think we have a pretty good board with diverse opinions, but it could easily be the other way around where you could have five people who are not, you know, who don't have the skills or the abilities to perform the job.
Or the time.
But yeah, so there's two sides to that.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody else? If not, I'm going to thank you for your time and hope it hasn't been too gruesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have-
Question?
Yes.
I know when we discussed this originally, we also stated that we would have some public feedback. Are we going to go forward with that as part of the entire discussion?
Well, I was hoping to have some discussion, but I thought that we would discuss it a little later since we did have an appointment with the chief. And he was here.
It'll be short and sweet, I can promise you that, with any luck at all.
I didn't want, I didn't want to make him sit here.
Chief does have a non-public meeting after this, that's not on schedule, but we can get him in.
Yeah, we don't have too much after that. Okay, chief, so you're here regarding donation of a replacement canine?
Replacement canine, correct. One of our current two dogs is nine and a half years old. It's having problems at night seeing, getting into the back of cruisers, things of that sort. It recently had operations to remove some of its teeth because of the gum lines.
You're not saying it's going to take its last visit to the-
No, no, no. Been very well cared for and will be very well cared for. One of my officers who's been involved with the canine programs throughout New England has come upon an opportunity to receive a free canine, partially trained, not green, that's valued about seven thousand dollars. This individual who owns it presently lives in Milford, has a number of other dogs he uses in other training exercises and has got way too many dogs at this point. We're looking at a fifteen-month-old Belgian Malinois and it's already started to be trained. So if we take it, we'll need a public hearing to get that.
Motion to proceed with the public hearing.
Nick?
Just a couple of questions, when you say it's beginning to be trained, would we accept it upon the completion of training? Would there be-
It's already received some basic training, basic commands, if you will, not any tracking or attack or any of that, but the obedience commands. So at this point, my canine officer has it in his possession evaluating it. If the board accepts to go forward, he'll can maintain that possession over the dog and is currently working with it. So it's-
He would complete the training, you're saying?
He would, he would-
For the most part.
The officer that currently has the dog has the dog that's not sick.
Right.
So there would be another handler or the same handler, we could open it up for a process. So, but again, it's also familiarizing the handler and the dog together.
I'm just getting, trying to get a handle on what else would be involved beyond just the acceptance of the dog going forward.
Nothing, nothing.
The reason for the public hearing is that we would be accepting a donation over five thousand dollars.
Correct.
I second that motion unless it was already seconded.
Okay.
It was not, it was not.
No, you're seconding the motion. And chief, I have, so we're going to have to schedule a public hearing?
Yes.
I have one question for you on that, I'm assuming that the dog is trained in the same, for the, for the same function that our current dog, it's not a drug dog.
It's not just a drug dog, it will have searching, patrol work, drug work, all of it tracking, so it'll be fully trained.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions of the chief?
Chief just emailed me the specifics on the dog, so we can put it in the public notice.
Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
It was only about three minutes, Scott. It's almost like a setup. I don't know if we'll put that on the agenda.
Jason?
Yeah, we have a non-public schedule with the chief. If it's okay with the board, I think since the chief is here, we do the non-public.
Sure.
All right, so we're going to need a motion.
How long do you think it's going to be, so we can let Andrew know?
Maybe ten minutes?
If that.
If that.
Okay, so we'll give, we'll give Andrew a break.
It's under hiring, D.
Okay, so we'll need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, roll call.
Yes.
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 We're in a non-public session, will probably be five to ten minutes. We are back from our non-public session with Chief Sullivan. And with that, we have any motions? Do we have any motion?
Oh, motion to approve the police chief's recommendations with respect to hiring for open positions that have been currently funded.
And?
Conditional offers.
And to offer conditional offers of employment.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, great. Okay, next item is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets, it looks like it's a busy week. Budget committee's meeting on Tuesday and Thursday, conservation on Wednesday, and planning board on Thursday. Consensus folder tonight includes AP warrant, the two thousand twelve property tax warrant, first half, well, second half, I'm sorry. And the tax rate calculation sheet that I passed out to you, those are confirmed rates from DRA. So you'll be accepting that also, as well as an agreement between the town of Goffstown and New Hampshire DOT for the CMAC projects and notice of a lien.
Motion to-
One more, license to sell pistols and revolvers for Joseph Markey and he'll be selling at five ninety-one, Masrow, Unit A.
Okay.
Motion to accept the consensus folder.
Is there a second?
Second, that motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, and the assessor recommends veterans' tax credit for map thirty-two, lot twenty-six, E thirty-eight, and intent to cut on map four, lot fifty-one-three, and a land use change tax release on map nine, lot sixty-eight.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
All right, we have a memo at six A in your packets from town engineer Megan Theria, requesting an extension to the self-imposed deadline of October thirty-first for residents to apply for stag grant reimbursement to hook up to municipal water in Lynchville-Danis Park.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the stag grant till October thirty-first of next year or until the funds are depleted, whichever comes first. I didn't, I don't agree that we should just do this in perpetuity or for another ten years, I'd rather do it in yearly increments.
Second. Okay, now that it's been seconded, I don't know. In, in reading the memo from Megan, I did not, I did not get a feeling of an actual reason as to why we need the extension.
Some residents who are really close to the water have been waiting for the drawdown of the lake and to do it. And it hasn't been drawn down yet this far.
Just a comment to that. When we say fifty percent, how much, that was over, that means there's about a hundred and fifty or plus here left?
Yes.
And there are, there are situations down there where there have been some people who do the employment who have been waiting for next year. There's been some employment issues, there's been some purchasing of lots down there where they're going, where they're actually removing shacks, believe it, you know, there's, so there are some that will come about next year. If I remember correctly, correctly, I'm just going to round a little bit, I believe the maximum was thirty-five hundred though, correct?
Three thousand thirty-five, somewhere around there.
Let's just say it was around there.
It was, yeah.
I'm saying, I would like to see an extension, but I don't think we need to do the full extensions, what I'd be saying. In other words, I mean, if we're looking at ten to fifteen homes, maybe we can adjust, you know, can it be adjusted? Or does it, all of it has to go back, is it all or nothing, or can they-
In terms of any amount left over?
Yes, that'd be my question.
I think that would come back to the board to decide. It's still a forty-five, fifty-five maximum.
No, 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 I wasn't meaning that regards, I meant regarding, the reality is we're probably, there's never going to be a hundred and fifty thousand used, is what I'm trying to get.
Right, and if we don't use it, we would have to designate how, why would we be holding on to it?
Well, I was saying, I didn't know if we could, if we could, well, I was just trying to see, could we designate a portion, that's all, to carry over, I didn't know if that was possible.
For what purpose?
For those, for those next, you know, next year who-
The following year?
Yeah, instead of, instead of going on a longer stand.
They had a, what, a five-year period, I think originally, on the stag grant, that you could, you'd have it to use for five years. But we didn't want it going on forever because then you're continuing to manage on an annual basis.
Right, because if, if, if you have that forever, I mean, there's no, there's no motivation for somebody to-
The federal government's deadline was five years from now.
Okay, I-
So the motion has been made, it's for one year?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's been seconded, any other-
And or whether the, you know, or if the funds are depleted, so.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Does the town send this information to the residents who haven't applied for the grant yet?
Those who haven't hooked up, we would-
Let them know the change in our decision, thank you.
And we'll put it on the website, too.
Yep. Okay, with that, we've got the non-public done, so selectmen's discussion, new business? Okay, on the old business, I guess.
I did, I had some old business and that was with respect, if you remember, we had a discussion, a meeting or two ago about releasing a legal opinion with respect to the village districts and membership on the budget committee. I also, I found this write-up from the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration,
Okay.
which I put a copy and I had Catherine make copies. And, long story short, there's a couple of key things that are, that are in here. Certainly take a look and review it. The first one is on page two and it's, and it was, with respect to budget committees, it says, can a village district have a budget committee? Village districts that are encompass wholly within a town with a municipal budget committee are, say, thirty-two, colon, fourteen, fall under the statutory budgetary authority and responsibilities of that budget committee. If a village district is in two or more towns, the district has the option to adopt its own budget committee, et cetera. So there's a couple of issues really that we're, I guess we're still trying to get our arms around is a village district is authorized by law under R, say, fifty-two. How, and again, if you read this write-up, it says, however, a few village districts had been given their authority by the legislature prior to the passage of fifty-two. We do know that the village water district started back in the late eighteen hundreds for the impoundment of water. Then it, it changed its, its scope a couple of times. But the question that remains is, are both of these, they're called precincts, their titles are precincts, are they precincts or are they districts? And that term is used somewhat interchangeably, but in order to be, how shall we say, controlled, you know, or this whole budget process, they would have to be a district under fifty-two. And I know Sue reached out to both precincts to see if they had any records, as our records here at town hall were not, I mean, we don't have that much.
But that handout, in the end, it provides a list from a state department, a department in the state.
Yeah.
Says, here are districts that our records indicate exist.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the key there is that they, there's a-
It might be others.
They're, they're used interchangeably. When I called up the Department of Revenue, I spoke to Barbara Robinson and she's like, everybody's on that, whether they're a precinct or a district.
So it's not, not fully vetted.
Correct, and they never have determined that. So I think the big issue is kind of twofold. One, if, if both of these precincts are in fact districts, which they may or may not be, then they do fall under-
The nineteen sixty vote at town meeting.
Right, they, yeah, and in that case, they would, their budgets would be prepared by the budget committee, similar to the town and the school and correspondingly, any recommendation made by the budget committee would appear on, at their, they don't have official, theirs is different, theirs is more like a town meeting or-
Yeah, traditional, annual meeting.
Right. If they're not a district, then the question remains, and I get, that's where we might have to get a legal opinion, is that are they even, subject to even be on the budget committee? That's the big, that's the bigger question that, that's out there. And I, and I believe, Sue, you reached out to the two precincts and they're still researching it, or one came back and-
Grassmere found no evidence that they ever adopted chapter fifty-two, they say they are precinct.
Okay.
They don't find anything where they were established as a village district.
Yeah, I spoke to the budget committee chairman who, I also placed a call up to the Secretary of State's archives. They had almost nothing from the Grassmere precinct, they did have a little bit on the village one. The person- The person, his name is Brian, he did not see anything where there was a vote, or records of a vote that adopted fifty-two in either. And I spoke to Dan Cludier after Saturday's budget meeting, and I talked to him about this, and he, he used to be the Assistant Secretary of State, he's just since changed his job, but he knows this person, Brian, and he's gonna try to get copies of both files for us, and he'll let me know, I'll see him tomorrow night, and we can, I'll, I'll find out more, more information on that.
So is there anything you need from us?
Um, no, I don't think, I mean, I think at this point, we're just still waiting from the village to see what, what they've been able to.
Grassmere Village?
Yeah, to see what they've been able to, to, to determine, and I think, I think the big question is that if there is, if neither precinct can show evidence of, of the, of having adopted fifty-two, or show evidence that they were somehow grandfathered in through the legislature, I think we're gonna have to then seek a legal opinion as to whether or not they even have a right to be on the budget committee, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
And I think it's premature at this point, I think, I think we have to determine, you know, if they have those records.
Okay.
So that was it.
Just, just one question, and I understand what you're trying, what you're speaking about, your next meeting is Thursday, how, how are you looking?
Tuesday, tomorrow.
I mean, Tuesday, I mean, eventually he'll be, we'll be making, some of we're making votes then, how are we going to look to that, that's my question, I guess, to this board.
I don't know if it's in the purview of this board.
Well, they're making votes on the budget that's been proposed before them, I mean, you could have.
Elected body there.
Yeah, but I mean, it's elected body, but the people we're talking about there is not an elected.
Right, if you ask me, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I, I think from, from reading some of the RSAs, and certainly from this write-up from, from the DRA, if they are a district, then they have, then they certainly have the right, you know, they have the right to vote, and they also have, by the same token, they are subject to the budget committee preparing their budget, similar to school and the town.
Do they get a recommendation?
And a recommendation, so I think until it's proved otherwise, I, I think, the only thing I can do is can, is to say, I, since it's, you know, until this thing is completely vetted, I'm gonna challenge, we're only gonna do challenge votes.
Yeah, no, I know.
I'm just saying that, I'm just.
Like, not, I don't have any.
I guess what I'm saying is that I, I think it's something that should be, needs to be resolved quickly, actually. I mean, we're going, we're, we're getting deep into the process, and one, I think it's fair to the gentleman who sits in from the, sits, who sits in from, from the water precinct to have an understanding, is he a viable part of that process or not, and two, is it illegal, is it legal within the process? I mean, I, I mean, that's what we're talking, a legal issue here, correct?
Yeah.
I would, I would think if their position is they're districts, and they have a seat at the table, then at the least, the budget committee should expect a budget from them. That's very clear, there's, there's no need for a legal opinion there, in other words, if.
Right.
Their position, until proven otherwise, that they're a village district, then they need to provide budgetary information to the budget committee, and their budget is subject to the budget committee's deliberations.
At a minimum, I think, I think the big question is, is that, and I don't know the answer to this, but who's, what, who, who has the onus here of proving that they're a district? Now, so Grassmere has kind of come back verbally, we haven't got anything in writing, right?
No.
So they've come back verbally saying, we've looked through our records, and we don't believe that we're, we never adopted fifty-two, we have no record of that, so we're a precinct, so, and they are not sending anybody. So.
Grassmere?
It's Grassmere.
Grassmere.
So now, I mean, I, on the village.
They both call themselves precincts, but we don't know if they.
And quite honestly, I don't know if we, you know, yeah, you read, you know, you read through the statutes, and it, and it seems pretty clear that you have to adopt fifty-two or be grandfathered in by an act of, of, of the legislature, and looking, you know, we have some records at Town Hall. I looked through it, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I didn't see.
That was definitive, and then, and the Secretary of State's archives has nothing that shows that either adopted it. And there's nothing in the public legislative record that states that they adopted it, that, that we know of, you know what I'm saying?
Fifty-two is adopted at Town Meeting.
Yes.
So that should be fairly.
No.
Not, not at, at their annual meeting.
At their annual meeting, so they'd have to go back into their records for the water precinct to see if they ever had a meeting where they adopted fifty-two. If they did, then we're all set.
So I, I mean, this is my, this is just my opinion, it would be, before he has a seat at the table at this point in time, to me, it would be upon them to bring that information forward. I mean, normally you don't say, hey, you know, are you, do you have the right to be here, you don't ask that, you know, hey, I'll get that down the road, you have that upfront.
Well, I don't know, that's kind of tough.
I mean, no, I understand, I understand you can't have that by Tuesday, but I don't think you wanna wait till after this budget season process, is what I'm getting at. I mean, in other words, you give, let's say, let's say you gave them the week to look, I mean, if it's not showing up in a week, I don't think two, three, four weeks down the road, it's going to make that difference.
But it, it sounds like we're relying on them to provide the records for the adoption of fifty-two.
Well, aye and nay, I mean, I, I think, you know, the Town Hall has a file on both precincts. There's nothing in any of the records that shows that they adopted fifty-two, and there's nothing in our records here that shows that they were granted that status by an act of the legislature. That's what we have, that's not ultimately the Secretary of State archivist, and would, would be the one that if they, if they didn't have anything, then there's no proof, I mean, it's clear, there's Town Records and the Secretary of State for the New Hampshire. If there's nothing there on either side, then I think the onus does shift to the water precinct to say, you show me where you do have that authority.
And I guess that's where I was going, because in order for fifty-two to be established, the selectmen have to set the district, and it has to be in Town Records.
Unless, but, okay.
Unless the legislature.
And they did do that, the legislature back in the late eighteen hundreds, and they did it again, there was several, like, three or four different amendments changing things around. They, they were water impoundment, then after that, they, lighting and some other different things, it's changed, their scope has changed. And those were actual Town Vote, Legislature, Legislative Votes that are, that are in this file at Town Hall. But there's nothing that shows that they adopted fifty-two, and I didn't see anything in there that showed that they, there was an act of, of the legislature that grandfathered them in. There could very well be, Nick, but it's not in our file.
But he's saying he thinks we should be searching the annual Town Meeting files for the adoption of fifty-two?
Because it says, upon the petition of ten or more voters, persons domiciled in the village, in the village of one or more towns, the selectmen of the town shall fix by suitable boundary, so I would imagine there would have to be some records of a selectman action.
No, because.
That's a precinct.
No, 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 he's right, no, no, Selectman Camperson was correct. However, that is upon, that is if those before that, the, they were already set by an act of the legislature, so we wouldn't have to have a Town Meeting to do that.
But if they were already set by an act of the legislature, then they are a village district.
No, they were set as precincts, they established as precincts.
RSA, look under fifty-two, twenty-two, I think, or, hold on. It says that they, they, even if they were, Nick, they would have to, let me bring it up. I might have it here.
You do us a quick question?
No, I want him to finish.
Okay.
Just bear with, if you could just bear with me for one second, I'll get you that.
I see, it's fifty-two, twenty-two.
And what is, can you read?
It says, village districts and precincts established under the laws heretofore enforced may adopt the provisions of this chapter and therefore shall have the rights conferred thereby, so if they were established as a precinct.
Right.
They could themselves adopt.
Exactly.
That's what I was going at, is that, I read that to say that you were, you were enacted by, by the legislature to be a precinct.
Precinct.
If you want all the rights and responsive, or privileges of fifty-two, you have to vote and adopt it. If you don't do that, then you, then you are under the authority of whatever the legislature gave you.
Exactly.
And the legislature did not give them the authority to be on the budget committee or to be part of that process, so that's kind of.
And so, my point is that within a very short amount of time, it may be appropriate for somebody, it could, I imagine it could be this board, you write a letter to the chair, the elected chair of that committee, to have the committee properly vet who is on that committee. This is not our job, it's that, it's that committee technically accepts who are representatives from the other non-elected positions.
The budget committee, you mean?
The budget committee is, they have to accept who is, who are the non-voted members on that committee. And it's up to them to say, in this case, precinct A, you haven't fully proven you're a district. And until you do so, and that can only occur at their Town Annual Meetings, which is next March, until you do that, you're not properly seated. So, you know, maybe the process would start once we feel comfortable with that, a letter to the chairman.
Nick, square question, how long is this, how many years has this been going on? I mean, is there, is there a reason why it has to be done tomorrow, why, I mean, can we just invest, do, follow all the exhaust, all the investigatory processes?
I think, well, there's a couple, there's a couple of, I personally see a couple of different issues with it. If hypothetically, they're not a district, and if at the end of the, at the end of the day, whether it be a legal opinion, et cetera, that, that they're not a district, and they should never have been on the budget committee, what does that say about all the votes that were taken by two, by two water precincts for, for, there could have been many close votes that were, that were altered because of that. So I think, and because of that, I think it is important for us to make sure that if they, if they should be seated, they are seated. Is, is our job as selectmen to uphold the laws, and if that's what the law is, and that's what the law is, then we shouldn't, you know, shouldn't be delayed. I, I don't, I, I know that we reached out to both of the precincts about two weeks ago, Sue did. One already came back, the other one we're still waiting on, so I don't, I don't think this really requires more than another couple of weeks in terms of asking them for a response to, okay, did you find anything in your records? But short of that, if, if there isn't one, then I think it would be, it would be who of us to either contact the chairman of the budget committee and also get an opinion to say, there's been no evidence to suggest that either precinct has demonstrated that they've adopted fifty-two. They were, here are the records that we have, what is your opinion with respect to whether or not they should be seated? And then take it from there. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but.
Well, why don't you see what happens tomorrow?
Well, what, well, what do you want me to do tomorrow?
Well, Dan was gonna look at that information.
He was gonna try, I mean, he said he would try to reach out to Brian, who's the archivist, that, I don't know if he did that already, probably not.
Okay.
Do you want, do we wanna go in the direction of Selectman Pierce to send the chairman of the budget committee a letter, you know, to that effect, to say?
Where I was coming from was you have two meetings between now and next Monday with the budget committee.
Yeah.
And my understanding, okay, so see where Dan is tomorrow with it, touch base with him and see if he got the information, and perhaps, you know, have a discussion with him and, and see, you know, that the board has had that, the, the discussion, and we haven't, you know, we need, we'd like to be able to conclude soon on this. Nick?
I think the proper course would be to go to the respective precincts at their next meeting and bring up the fact that the selectmen have an issue or a question as to their legal standing one way or another. If it was an issue with any other, I mean, I.
We did do that, though, Sue did, Sue reached out to them.
But it's not, it's, it's the board of selectmen that's questioning it, and I think as a matter of courtesy, we should go to those respective bodies and say, these are the questions we have, because the budget committee, they, I, I think if we're the ones questioning it, we should go to them and say, this is our information, we need to know, one way or another, where you are, either through your records, show us legislative action, whatever. But to go to the budget committee with our concerns and then expect the budget committee to, to deal with it, I, I think that's going around about.
You have a point. Through Sue, we may have approached a commissioner or a staff worker, and it was a one-on-one conversation. There could be a representative address a proper monthly meeting and put it in their minutes as public comment.
I think we should just send a lot of.
Or on their agenda, that, that we have these concerns.
And both, do both, but I think we should do both.
Wait, just hang on a minute, my understanding is that this was brought up by the chairman of the budget committee a while back, am I correct?
Well, the chairman has discussed this on numerous occasions, I don't, it was brought up about two months ago. We talked about it with respect to filling the, a vacancy for the Grassmere.
Okay.
And that is how this whole thing kind of started, was whether or not it had to be a commissioner, and then from there, are they a district? And that's really where, was when, when, when we got that, that legal opinion, that's kind of what, what came from it. Are, are, the question that was asked, because I was actually in Sue's office when, when, when the attorney was on the phone with respect to this, was, are they a part of your tax bill, and there were some different, you know, questions that, that came about, and that's what generated all these questions. So I think, I happen to agree with you, Nick, that I, I think the most prudent route would be to send a letter to both water precincts. And, I don't know, I think, I think some of them, I think one of them meets Monday, so that would be difficult for us to actually physically appear, but to send a letter to say, here are the, our issues, can you help us in trying to resolve them, you know?
Well, let me ask this question, you had, Sue had discussion with Grassmere?
Yeah, I sent out an email on October eighteenth, and to both of them, and Grassmere called and said that they had researched back to nineteen forty-three, their annual meetings, and they found nothing in there where they adopted chapter fifty-two.
Okay, and they said they weren't, and the response was that they weren't gonna be sending anybody?
They had responded to that earlier, that was.
Hey, perhaps the letter to Grassmere should just confirm that conversation?
No.
Okay, that, in the conversation that we had, that our understanding is that you researched to that point in time and found no evidence that you ever adopted it, and in, on a prior conversation, as a result, you will not be sending anybody to the budget committee. So that would confirm that unless we get something back differently. And then how do you wanna respond, how do you wanna handle this? Or that was.
Week tomorrow.
Can, can I say something with that?
Yeah.
I mean, not, on one, when I say, you know, to try and settle this in, in a, in a short span of time, I think it's almost unfair to the gentleman who's gonna be sitting there, all of a sudden, we get close to the end, and we say, he'll, by the way, you know, you know, let's say something happens and there's no longer a seat, I mean, that's not, that's not fair to him, and also, from a legal line, it's not good for the whole process of votes are being taken, especially, you know, when we talk about what happened in the past, well, what happened in the past was based upon the best information we had at that time. Now we're sitting here with a different pieces of information, and I think it's, it's, it's for us to act on it and act on it in a, in a timely manner.
I just, I just wanna reiterate that, again, from, when, when you look through this document.
Pretty simple.
There is one thing that's very clear, is that if you are a district, your budget has to be prepared, you could go through that same process as a town or a school district.
Therefore, you're on the committee.
And you're on the committee, but yet you're a budget now. I have been doing this for, I've been on the budget committee probably five or six years, different, different times, and never did the budget committee ever make any recommendations, never even did, made any adjustments to any of these water precinct slash district budgets. So one thing that's very clear to me is what Nick said before, is that if they believe that they're a district, then they must have, the, the budget committee must prepare their budget, and they must be recommended, if they believe that, if they do not believe it, and they voluntarily decide to withdraw, as in the case of Grassmere or other ones, that's, that's fine, too, but.
But let me.
That's clear.
Let's just take one thing here, though, okay? If they have somebody sitting on a budget committee, they by statute are, just like we are required to have a recommendation on the, our budget from the budget committee and the board of selectmen, then, am I understanding this correct, that they are required to? Then, am I understanding this correct, that they are required to have on their budget that they give to, that they're, when they have their annual meeting, a recommendation by both the budget committee and the commissioners?
Yes. And they're also, the public hearing is conducted by the budget committee, not by them. They have a different form of government, where they might have an annual meeting where people just go to a room, but what is posted would be their budget and then there'll be a rec, same, same as we have. They, they have, we have official ballot, so people, we have deliberative session, then ballot.
Okay, but I guess the question that I have then is, our ballot goes to DRA, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If we sent our ballot to DRA and we had no recommendations on it, or, does DRA get it before we do the vote?
DRA gets your warrant, your annual warrant, because that's what the ten percent rule is based on, plus they also get your adopt, your official ballot.
With the recommendations on it. Do they?
Warren has recommendations.
Right, but do they require a ballot from the precincts?
I can, I can explain that. Um, I, I think when you, when you look through some of these materials, you'll see that some of them are called, what's called self-sustaining, which means they do not participate in the, they still send all the forms to the DRA, but they're self-sustaining, they don't go through the municipal budget process. They do, they handle their own budgets, they're a precinct and, and they don't.
But we need the number, we need the number from these precincts for the budget, uh, for the fi, final numbers. There was one time we were waiting for the numbers from Grassmere.
That is correct, because I'm talking to Barbara Robinson, um, they need the numbers from the two water precincts before they set our tax rate. And on our, from what she told me last week, there's zeros. Because they are, they're, they're revenue neutral, so they just show a zero, they don't, they don't affect the tax.
Nick, are there any vacancies on the budget committee currently?
There's one. Are they filling that one, or?
Well, I guess that's where I was gonna go with the, would, would the budget committee and the Village Water Precinct District be willing, in the sake of making sure we have legal votes and everyone is, who's on it is supposed to, take the individual who's now currently representing the Goffstown Water Precinct, vote them into that vacant position, Goffstown Village would not reappoint anyone until we can clarify this matter. So, in the interim, that individual is.
Can't do it, because the budget committee voted at, with a.
They can reconsider.
No, there was, there was a motion to limit reconsideration, yeah. So it's impossible. Can't do that.
I mean, that would kinda serve both so that we.
Yeah.
That would, that would.
I'd like to just put some other information now before us. The monthly meeting for Grassmere, uh, if they were to consider, uh, this, is, uh, first Wednesday.
It's Grassmere.
Of Grassmere, I said, yeah, Grassmere is first Wednesday of the month. But Grassmere isn't the hot issue, because they already intend not to immediately.
We already decided we were gonna do that one.
The village is the second Tuesday of a month, which is coming very quick, and, but the second Tuesday is before the budget committee will be resolving bottom-line numbers.
But prior to that, they could be making.
They could be at, taking part of the discussion, but I don't expect it before the second Tuesday. So, that's a date where the, uh, the governing body of the precinct could make, uh, a determination if they're properly constituted to participate at the budget committee, that would be at that forum.
So what are you, are you saying, are you implying that we send them the letter letting know what our issues are?
Mm-hmm.
Um, ask them for a decision relative to whether or not they feel they are properly seated by that date?
If, if they're, if they're.
Proof?
Proof, yeah. If, if they can, if they fulfill the requirements of RSA fifty-two.
Well, I, I, I guess, what I, either, either, either the proof has to be in two forms. One, um, adoption of fifty-two, or proof that they were grandfathered in through the act of the legislature prior to that. Because clearly fifty-two, twenty-two, what was right? States that unless they did adopt fifty-two, then their, then their powers are, are the ones that were derived from when they were originally created, which would not apply.
That is their next, uh, public meeting of that governing board. And, uh, they could certainly make a decision at that time, based on the information they have between now and then. Eventually, if they wanted to go the district route, they would not be able to do that until their annual meeting, which is in March.
So, just for some, just for me for clarification wise, I don't think, I mean, I understand meeting, first of all, they can't forward it in, it has to be to their annual meeting. So it's just a matter of either, do, do they wish to proceed? And if so, do they have the proper documentation? I don't think we have to go two Tuesdays or anything like that. I, I, I don't understand, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that contacting them, I mean, this is not, I, I don't think it's gonna take more than a week to figure out if they have this information or not.
I'm not disagreeing with you per se, but.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
Why do we prolong these things a month, two weeks, three, it, it, it doesn't make any sense. They're well aware of the situation. Um, if we want a letter to formalize it, to make, to formalize that's one thing, but it's a simple process. You know, we, uh, the, the work's been done on this in regard to state, in regard to town, they're aware of the situation, either they have it or they don't.
They're a governing board, one commissioner can't make a decision for the board.
I'm talking about the, it, we can notify them, and if they feel the need to, they can have someone go and look for this documentation, and if they don't have it, and they, I'm, I'm not sure what they can do or not do, but if they feel the need to have a special meeting, that's within their power. But I mean, to, to stretch this out a month in the budget season where it becomes important, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Hey, Nick?
We're making a lot of assumptions here. Regardless of what this board's decision is, does the budget committee need to abide by that?
The budget committee needs to abide by the law.
Under, well, and, and the law is open to interpretation and.
Correct.
Going the legal route, we could be beyond.
That's correct.
March elections. Uh, what, my point is, if the budget committee has a consensus believes they should be at the table, does it matter what we say? I know we can provide our legal opinions and they'll try to get their legal opinions. But I'm saying, if we're trying to impose and say, this is what we're gonna do, as you said, it's very simple, we're just gonna say, you either provide it or you don't. If the budget committee doesn't go along with that, or do they have to go along with that?
And what, but what do you do when, when, uh, when the budget, when, they, they vote in a budget, they vote on a budget, next thing you know, we're going in deliberative session, all of a sudden, it becomes an issue. Why do we, you don't wanna wait till the end, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, but I'm, I'm just trying to find, what position do we, that, that's an elected body?
The, I, I think we, of all the people involved in this whole process, we all, all of us took the oath to uphold the laws of the state of New Hampshire. This is a law of the state of New Hampshire. The budget committee also did, they took an oath as well. But we are the key people that are responsible to make sure that the law is upheld. So if we have a, a doubt as to whether or not they're properly seated, and they have a legal opinion, they are, and we don't believe they are due to an opinion, et cetera, then it would be incumbent upon us to then deal with it legally, I guess. But I think we are way, way out in terms of that one. I, I happen to agree with, with, with Selectman Pierce on this one, is that I think we send a letter uh, to the, to, to both precincts, one of them we already talked about, the other one would be to the village one, which would states that, you know, on October some, such and such, we, we sent an, we sent an email request in these documentation. This started from a conversation with respect to a legal opinion we got regarding, uh, whether a, a budget committee member had to be a village, water precinct, et cetera. Um, it, it raised the issue as to whether or not, um, you hold the statutory authority to sit on the budget committee. You know, we, you know, can you please provide us with documentation of that, you know, to, which would support your position?
Our records do not.
Our records don't, don't indicate that, um, and if you have anything to support it, we would greatly appreciate you forwarding that, along with your position as to whether or not you feel you're properly seated. And, and then, uh, in case you provide that.
I don't, I don't think with, with your position as to whether or not you are. Either you provide the documentation, if you don't provide the documentation, then you aren't.
That's, I guess, where my, my point is. So they reply to you, yes, thank you very much for your letter, we're looking into the matter, it's gonna take some time to do this research, we'll get back to you.
Then I have a problem with that.
Or on the other side, we may be a district and it's our position that we still have a place at the table.
I would have a problem with that.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I mean, we, you're thinking it's so simple, we're gonna settle this next week, and they're not gonna sit at the, the next budget meeting, and I don't think it's that simple. And I don't think we can just say, it's, it's this or.
It is, I do find it rather interesting, though, that, that Grassmere, within a week.
Figure it out.
Went through their records, determined that they saw no evidence, and they came back and verbally at least responded, yeah, okay, we understand. And I think that goes to Selectman Fornier's point. I guess my only agreement with, with Selectman Pierce is that one person was contacted, they do meet monthly. Um, we're sending them a letter, just acknowledging the fact that we've already asked for this information. I think it is innocent enough that there won't, there will be discussions, but no votes taken, I don't think, until that time period anyway. And, yeah, we, we, we want an answer, we need to have that documentation by that time. If, if we don't get it, then I think we have to make that decision as to how we wanna proceed from there, whether that be legal opinion, uh, court action, whatever, but that's, that's, uh, that, that's neither here nor there.
One thing I wanna stay away from, I wanna stay away from us trying to tell another elected body how they conduct themselves. Okay? I understand that, I understand that we've taken an oath. But the last thing I wanna do is, is tell another elected body how to conduct their business.
If, I agree with Selectman Gross, if it's not us who will stand up and question the authority of a person.
Someone has to. And it's not saying that they're wrong, it's just saying that there's, that there's a doubt, a strong doubt as to whether or not. And, and then sometimes reasonable people, good pe, people, and I'm not, I have no beef with any of these folks. Either they belong there or they don't. If they do, that's fine, just show us the, show us the documentation. But if they don't, and there's, and there's compelling reason to state that they're there and they shouldn't be, is that fair to the community where these votes are, where, where votes have been taken in the past, maybe they shouldn't have been? To me, that is wrong. And I think that if there is no other, this, that's what this board has to do. Um, same thing on planning board decisions and things of that nature, you know, we have to do these things.
And the longer it drags out, the more complicated this is gonna get. You don't wanna have votes in place and then have a, have a, have a decision made that's not, that was not, um, in faith of what the process should have been.
So we're gonna send a letter to the Village Water Precinct?
Yep, with the date that Selectman Pierce, that's what I, you know, the date that he.
They need to discuss it at their monthly meeting, uh, second Tuesday of the month and.
But I don't think we should be telling them that they need to discuss it.
We would, we would like to address this as an agenda item at their monthly meeting.
So you're talking?
We can do that, just like other people ask us for agenda items.
The second Tuesday of November is what we're talking?
Yeah.
So then, that's the fifteenth. How is that with the rest of?
You know what, I, I just, I don't think this is always, it's not gonna be an easy type process. I think it has, I think, for one, they have, they, they can decide right now whether they want their person to attend, vote, not vote. They have, they, they have that, they can, that's their prerogative. Um, but I think, I think we have to give the courtesy to another board in town to give them, you know, some time to, 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 to do that research perhaps, and/or to meet, you know, without holding a special meeting. I think that's just courtesy, and, um, I don't, I don't think that the, that the timeframe that Selectman Pierce mentioned would be, uh, a disservice to the process. And I say that because although votes do get taken, key votes, when you take the vote to go to public hearing on a number, that doesn't typically happen on both till December. So, I think we're okay.
So what are we gonna do then? We're sending a letter to the Village Precinct, request them to be on their agenda?
No, two things. I, I mean, I, 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 what I heard, or Sue, maybe you wanna recap it, I, I thought it was we were sending them a letter just explaining what, what transpired, we sent an email on the October eighteenth.
Okay, and that our doc, we have no documentation that shows that they're a.
District.
District.
And they adopted fifty-two. And there's no evidence to suggest that they were granted that authority through an act of the legislature. Therefore, it is our opinion that they maintain the authority as derived from the initial acts of the legislature. So unless there is evidence, unless, unless you can provide evidence to the contrary, or please provide us evidence of the contrary, or please provide us anything that shows that you've adopted fifty-two, because they may have.
Who's signing the letters? Is the town administrator signing the letters, or the chairman?
Chairman. I think it should come from the board.
Okay.
And then, um.
When do we do this? What, a motion?
Oh, boy, okay. Um, I'll make a motion to direct the chair to send a letter to the Village Water Precinct recapping our initial request, uh, via email of October eighteenth, along with a, um, brief explanation as to, I guess, the genesis of the inquiry. Um, and advising, it's gonna be a long one, advising the, the precinct that town records do not demonstrate the adoption of RSA fifty-two, uh, village districts. Nor do town records reflect, um,
That you've been grandfathered.
That, 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 uh, right, that, that the village district was grandfathered through an act of the New Hampshire legislature. Um, should our records be, uh, incomplete, or should you have any, um, evidence to the contrary, you know, please, please contact us immediately? Fail, I would also say that, um, without, without, uh, adoption of fifty-two or a prior act of the legislature, the, um, there does not appear that there is legal standing to be on the budget committee. And the other question is, and then the flip side is, if you want me to, do you want me to add anything about, we would like to appear a, a, at your, or representative? I don't know if that's necessary.
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, so.
Before I, before I second that, if you allow me, um, should this letter really go to both precincts?
Well.
We already addressed the.
Yeah, the other one.
So we're, we're comfortable with Grassmere?
Yeah, 'cause Grassmere acknowledged it, and it's simply sending a, an acknowledgement letter to that effect.
Okay, thank you. So I'll second the motion.
And.
Nick?
Just a clarification. Grassmere acknowledged the fact that they did not adopt fifty-two. They previously had said they weren't gonna send a representative, and I think part of that was because there was no one that.
Right.
Wanted to do it.
We're gonna tie the two together in the letter, is what I understood.
Right.
Those two different issues.
But we're gonna tie them together in the letter.
What happens if next year, there's someone at Grassmere that decides they wanna sit on the budget committee?
That's why I think Sue needs to clarify.
Right, if they're under the, they may be under the impression that they have a seat at the table.
Right, right, no.
No, the discussions were, were clear that if they didn't adopt and didn't have a grandfathered by legislature.
And that's what the intent of, when I brought that up, what she was gonna basically do was memorialize
Yes.
the conversations and what transpired over the last several weeks. Okay. Okay, any other discussion on this?
I'm sorry.
Did you second it?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Just, and listening to it, I apologize, did, were, were we addressing the dates on this?
Oh, yeah, we were gonna put, uh, we would, the courtesy of a reply by November.
Day after, day after their monthly meeting.
Right.
So you're looking at the sixteenth or earlier?
Right, November sixteenth or earlier.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous.
Yes?
Um, I don't know if, uh, public, uh, remember we talked about, uh, people wanting to comment on what we talked about before with, um, the town government, the, um, town manager? Remember we talked about, would, I don't know if that's something that, I don't know if that's why Tess is here or not, or she has a, I don't know. But we've been, if she's not, then that's fine, but I didn't rig this, so don't ask me, I don't know what she's gonna say. No one knows what Tess ever is gonna say.
I, I don't know, I'll, you know, uh, that's, that's gonna be our next item of discussion, and I, I'll ask is. Well, we're still on old business. And since we brought this up and discussed it in the past, it is old business. So, uh. So, uh, you know.
You're out of my ear?
You don't have to tell us.
No, I'm happy to share, I just, I just would never interject without invitation, unless I couldn't.
I'm a little ahead of the disappointment, curiosity is good.
Hey.
Uh, the reason I came is because our director was invited to your table, and I think it's only right that we come to hear what you are asking of her and how she presents us. That being said, um, this is the first I knew that you were considering this, and I, I have a page full of questions and notes.
Could, could you come up to the microphone, please?
Yes. Do you want me to sign in?
No.
I got you. How much more do you want me to repeat? None of it?
No, you, you were about to address some subjects.
I wasn't gonna go through, I wasn't going to go through the list of questions and things, I, my presumption was you would not be actually taking action on this tonight.
I don't anticipate us to.
Um, but I do have a page full of notes and comments that I find it a very interesting conversation. So, um, I have another public comment on other stuff.
Oh, well, then we're, I'll open a public comment.
Well, I thought that's what you did, I thought that.
No, 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 specifically for the agenda item, public comment.
Old business.
Yeah, but it's the same, uh, that's an agenda item.
See, I'm confused.
Public comment is not for something that's on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's an open forum.
Well, I understand, so I'm kinda confused why you brought that up.
That's what I'm trying to explain. Cause we, we have a tendency.
My other thing?
We, we have a tendency to have a lot of confusion sometimes.
I do.
On whatever subject.
I'm gonna reflect that the board allowed further public comment by Tess Martin's.
I said I was gonna open, I was opening up public comment.
Okay, well, my other public comment is more a question. You approved, um, the sale of guns, how close is that to Bartlett School?
The sale of what?
Guns, is that what I understood?
Revolvers.
Pistols and revolvers, yes.
How close is that to the elementary school?
There is no, uh, as far as I know, as I looked it up this afternoon, there is no zoning for that type of retail establishment. There are zoning for tattoo parlors, adult stores, um, daycare centers, you name it. Um, I did not see anything in our zoning ordinance which had anything to do with the sale of firearms. And, um, had I seen that, I might have, uh, voted differently, but as we, as I stated five minutes ago, our job is to uphold the laws, and I, and I didn't see anything that prohibited it. I mean, is it something that I'm pleased with? Not really. But, um, it's a, it's a legal.
Basically, it's beyond the, it's out of our hands.
It's a legal right to have that store, I mean.
That's just, uh, that was just another big surprise, so, no, I really was watching what you were doing and listening, but, um, maybe I'll craft my questions in an email.
A, a good, a good point for, uh, the, the public viewing this, if, if there is concern about that going into the future, it could be a petitioned article, uh, to the zoning folks, change it, planning.
I, I, I don't.
I don't think that would even be legal.
No, because that came up in front of the planning board, and the discussion was, this is a state-regulated issue that we have no local control over.
Well, I guess then that goes to Mr. Campesano's earlier comment that we get to vote for those people. So.
I might wanna stay tuned for HB three thirty and the five something other one, there's, there's two of them that have to do with that.
So, my, my thoughts are all very preliminary in this, so I really didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that's it, let me walk away.
Thank you, and we'll close public comment. Alright, so.
You know, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I think that raises a good, a, a good point that a lot of people don't understand, is that we may personally agree or disagree with certain things, but we vote according to what the law is when it's a legal type of thing. Um, whether it be public, non-public, when we have these discussions, we have to follow statutes, ordinances, even if we personally, you know, may or may not agree with it, um, and some people just, you know, I think that's a good indication that on this particular issue, um, it did raise some eyebrows for me, I, you know, I was surprised myself, but when you read through the zoning ordinance and you read the state, state statutes, that's legal, it's permitted, it's permitted, so.
Okay, alright, going back to, uh, our old business, uh, early discussion that we have to have a discussion, a follow-up of the workshop, what that we have with the department heads regarding the town manager form of government, I'll open that back up to the board. If you wanted to have any further discussion on it.
I mean, I, I got, I got the sense from the conversation that the majority of the board did not wanna proceed in that, in that manner, so I'm, uh, I'm comfortable with that, that's, you have to, have to accept that. Um, but I was also intrigued by, uh, Selectman Campesano's, uh, suggestion that we think about uh, attempting it without actually enacting, you know, um, that particular RSA or voting on it. So, I think there's, there are some opportunities to, for lack of a better word, experiment with, uh, greater delegation of duties, perhaps.
Well, what I would suggest, okay, what I would suggest and what I would, I would like to be able to see, okay, at least so that we can have a, uh, a, a clearer picture of where we're going and people, uh, that try to follow us can understand where we're going and what they might expect from this. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, I would, I would like to, uh, perhaps, if everybody were to write down what their expectations would be. Uh, perhaps, you could do it in a couple of different ways, you could, you could list the pros and cons of what you think that we have, uh, what the advantage is, uh, where there are deficiencies in what we have and what, what do we need, so that perhaps we could come out with a clear picture of several items that we, we wanna see if we can perhaps make an improvement on, have that discussion, and then go forward with giving that authorization to the town administrator. I mean, does that seem reasonable?
In some respects, I think we had a lot of that dialogue tonight.
But I wanna, I'd like to see it listed, in other words, I'd like to be, you know, this board always likes to have clear goals, okay? I'd like to see clear what we expect, so that citizens could know what they're expecting, because as it is right now, uh, some of the things.
Clear duties of what, if there was delegation of response.
Expectations of.
Okay, I'm confused, do, do you?
Are we talking increased delegation, or are you talking a town manager?
Uh, yeah, that's why I'm losing it.
I'm not, I'm lost where you're at here.
No, 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 I thought we were, you were talking about what I had said earlier about we can vote to give Sue authority.
Right, I was, I was going to list maybe some of the things where we could delegate authority to the town administrator uh, under certain, under a defined scope that, or list of those types of things, and then the board can then determine whether or not they wanted to extend that authority.
O- okay, but I guess what I would like to at least formulate, come out of, of discussion with, is a clear list of where we want this to go with Sue, so Sue was clear, too.
Yeah, um, and I would add that that should be a package, it shouldn't be one item next Monday, you know.
Oh, no, no, that's what I'm saying, we need to put the whole picture together.
Package.
Nick?
When this was first brought up by Selectman Gross, I think you kind of outlined a process you wanted to go by, and you talked about meeting with the department heads, but you also talked about getting public input.
Thank you.
I would like to see, and.
Thank you.
If anyone else agrees, maybe reaching out to our newspaper, uh, representative, reporter, discuss with them that the board is looking at this various, the various forms of government, and we will invite the public to attend a particular meeting on whatever date, and we would accept public comment on this specific, I'd like to hear from the public. We've heard from the department heads, I'd like to hear from the other side, so that they are involved in our discussions versus reacting to our decisions.
Well, I understand where you, what you're talking about, but I guess the difficulty that I have is having a conversation with somebody. If I am not clear on what it is that I'm, my expectations are, what I anticipate, and how I can explain to that person from their perspective, what some things that they may expect to be is changes. I mean, as it is right now, uh, who do they contact? Who has the authority on certain things, okay? Without that clarity, I'm not capable of having an intelligent conversation as to try to get some input from somebody if I'm not clear on what I'm trying to communicate to them. That's, that's where I'm coming from, so I, I think at that, until we have that, that, that get to that point, I think we need to firm up what it is that we're looking for as a board.
The, 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 the issue is, there's two issues, I, I understand where you're, where you're at, Nick's point, though, is engaging the public in a dialogue of, here is where we stand now, how we do things, here is what the town manager form of government allow, could allow you potentially to do, community, what do you think about this?
No, but it, it doesn't, because unless we know clearly what it is that we feel that we're lacking here, I can't have an intelligent conversation with somebody to say to them, the reason why I think this might be good, or why I would like to try this, is because these three things, or these four things, and this is how they would change, I can't have that conversation.
If you read them, I mean, if we read, were to read through the minutes of tonight's discussion, or the, the transcript of, of it, I think you'll see things as to, um, this board meets, uh, once a week, uh, in terms of, you know, greater, uh, more instantaneous feedback in trying to resolve issues, um, then there's, there's a, a greater accountability in ter, uh, there's also greater consistency and continuity of the message, because one person is, is, is literally in charge of other department heads, I mean, this, I think a lot of those things were, were stated, were stated tonight, we can certainly encapsulate them and, and, and write down kind of the pros and, pros and the cons.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this, Sue, at this point in time, that this conversation, do you have a clear understanding what this board would like to see you being able to do?
Or the two people that were advocating for it?
Oh, because this is my point.
No, I, because I.
What a loaded question.
Just say no, Sue, just say no.
I, I think at this point, I'm clear with what a town manager would be doing, the RSA spells it out fairly clearly. What I'm not clear on is what, why it is we would be doing that. What it is we're not doing now, however, I'm still open to listening to the pros and cons before I, I come to a decision on, is what we're doing now worth or not worth going to a town manager? And I think in order to make that decision, I wanna hear from the public. And I think there's at least two people on this board who will try to make the argument for why we need to go to a town manager, and I would expect when the public comes to give us their comment, they would be the ones to articulate the reason why they wanna make this change. I will be very open with them to say, I don't know if this is what I wanna do, or if I would support, because I haven't heard all the pros or the cons. I'm, I'm up in the air right now.
Is it your anticipation, you're gonna get the pros and the cons from the general public?
Well, I'm gonna get some feedback from the public, as I got some feedback from department heads.
Yeah.
The, the public, those are the voters that put us here.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that are expecting representation in one form or another, and I would like to hear.
Because I don't think the general public knows the difference between town manager and town administrator.
But I think there are enough people out there that.
Yeah, I think there's other elected officials and appointed officials in town that may be more familiar with it.
The, the interesting thing is that if this were on the ballot, whether by the Board of Selectmen or by, as Selectman Pierce said, by a petition or something, um, ultimately, that business case would have to be made, um, as to why is there a need to change? And if, if there was people out there that felt that it was a compelling reason to change, then they would vote for it. If they felt that the business case wasn't made for it, then why change something that, that is not broken, um, then they wouldn't vote for it, so, um, you know, I think, I think in, in that respect, it kind of goes back to what, what you were saying before, Steve, is that, um, you know, whether it, it ends up in the ballot or not, there still needs to be some discussion with, with the public to say, okay, here, you know, here's what it is, um, so I don't, I don't think it hurts, I don't think it hurts to have a, a time where he, here's what we're entertaining, and would you like to comment on it, or ask questions, and it doesn't hurt. I would say this anecdotally, I've spoken to a few people, and, um, it's not, it's not overwhelmingly uh, those who wanna see change, but, um, there have been a couple of people that I've spoken to said, no, I don't like, I don't like, uh, power being in a non-elected, a person, similar to what was, what was the write-up in this thing, and then there were others that say, yeah, we're way too big. Um, we shouldn't even, we shouldn't even be having this step, we should go right to our mayor and alderman or something, we're too big, I'm just telling you. Whether you like it or not.
We, we make a decision on an intersection, and we have people who come, why weren't we asked, why didn't we have input? This is a big potential change, and.
Oh, I'm not against public input, but I think you need to do a some framework.
Be able to say.
Need to provide some information.
Come and provide your input, even if you wanna tell us that you don't wanna change just because you don't wanna change.
But I guess, if I'm, if I'm gonna be running a meeting, and I have people that have been invited here to get their input, I wanna be able to have the conversation and clearly articulate to these people that I'm asking for input what it is that we're underneath right now, which is half of the explanation, there's the town administrator, that we're looking at the town manager, and what the expectations of the board, of the people who are asking you for the input, wh- what our expectations are, to see, and, and what are your expectations, but.
So, what I'm hearing here, then, would it be safe to say that we could go forward with, with, with Selectman Campesano's, I, uh, recommendation that we have a, a certain date put away for, for, for comment, and prior to that date, we, you wanna have, you wanna have more of a a finite list of what those things are, so, I mean, we could do both, I mean, I don't, I don't think one is exclusive of the other.
That's, that's what I was trying to say, is that we have an idea of, of what it is, because.
And I think if we did this in like, in early December or something, that gets ample time, you know?
By early December.
By early December.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, is that fair?
But I think it's important to reach out to the media, um, because we can post this, and very few people are gonna really know what's happening, but it, that would be a story, you know, Goffstown's considering change of government, I mean, people are gonna read that, the interest will be, um, generated, and people will come and make comments.
So, either it's gonna have a reaction or not.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't wanna bury it in a, a public announcement that we put on the back door, saying in two weeks, we're going to, to discuss this, and we want public comment.
So, the town administrator would, would reach out to the media?
A pollster.
I say it because it's non-binary.
Is that in your job description, or is that a town manager?
I say that only because if one of us reached out, one would then accuse, you know, like, oh, well, you tried to slant this, you know, and.
Just, just let us know that.
I'll generate a vocabulary list for you.
Alright, so.
Anonymously send this to tonight's meeting.
So, do we wanna set the, set the Monday for that, for that, then?
Our first meeting in December.
Mm, okay.
Thanksgiving is just.
Alrighty. You could.
You have to do it in December, because if you don't do it in December, you, if, if there are people who wanna see it on the ballot, we have to make a decision to put it on the ballot in December.
So, the earliest Monday in December is the fifth. Other than that, it's gonna be Monday the twenty-eighth, if you're going earlier. Is that too fast?
Week after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I would, uh, that'd be the week after Thanksgiving.
There is no good day.
But the week before.
Oh, no, I'm just throwing out the dates, I'm just, I have no preference.
I don't know how.
How much time do we need to?
Alright, yeah. We have next Monday, so, it's gotta be one, two, three. Cause we're just talking common at this point, it'd be four, it'd be four Mondays away from.
It is what it is, I mean.
You could do it on the twenty-first, I mean, that's, that's a whole month, I mean.
That's fine.
I mean, let's go the twenty-first in November.
And when is Thanksgiving?
Twenty-third or fifth or something like that.
Exactly.
Same week.
Same week, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it that way. Pick a date. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Do it the week before, a week after, the week of Jan- December. As long as it's ample time.
I mean, I don't see why you couldn't even go the 14th of November.
Cause we're not gonna be ready.
Let's put this in perspective. If we're not going to go forward, if we're moving along the lines of trying this for a while, then we're probably not gonna do anything for this coming election. So the public comment part can come a little later. Following what the chairman suggested, maybe if we sit down and come up with that list of expectations, duties, take some time to formulate that, put that into effect. Then as we move forward, bring in public comment.
Can I play devil's, can I play devil's advocate? Would, well, we know that we have our own, I guess, personal feelings on this. I mean, some of us may have reached out to others and sought their opinion. But when you made the statement, well, we decided that we're not, we're probably not gonna put us an article. I mean, if there was a lot of people coming in here saying, you know what? Or the, or the, or the public sentiment was, you really should give us the opportunity to vote on this thing and, and make your case, then we may put it on. But if we don't have that comment before the ability for us to put it on, then it can't happen. So I think, and I was, I, I think I was pretty, um, fair in the sense that last year we went through this, there wasn't enough time. We gotta talk about it. Well, I did, I did that. I, and I waited and I waited and we had a good discussion. And I think in, you know, I think in fairness, it would be nice to have that public comment, you know, you know, prior, you know, for, by, at least before the first week of December. If it has any legs, if the, if the community supports it, um, then maybe it's something that will go on the ballot. If the community doesn't support it, then it doesn't. Maybe we try something else, but at least it's an up or down vote either way um, with the ability to take some public comment. And I, and I'd be satisfied with that. And if, and if the support's not there, the support's not there. I mean, we all, it's not, it's not a huge pressing issue for most people, um, you know, right now.
People are gonna need information. So what information are you gonna provide them at this public hearing?
That's my point. That's my point. What are we gonna, we're gonna give you the RSA and tell them here, this is it, is the RSA?
But it goes back to what you were saying before, is that you're, you're basically saying, you, you're, what is a pro and cons list? That is not that difficult to come up with. It's, it's really-
Not necessarily a pro and con, okay? I think the people deserve a, an explanation from their governing body as what the governing body or members on that governing body think is the problem with the former government that we had currently.
We're going around in circles on the chicken and egg question here. So somebody has to break the circle and be prepared to write something that could be released to make the public smarter for the, a hearing, open meeting.
You know, arguably, you see it in USA Today. It's for an issue and against an issue. I don't have a problem writing the for. If you, if one of you three wants to write the against, then we'll, we'll put that in the paper.
That, that's, that's, that's not, we've had this discussion that we want to make it feedback, instant feedback for the department heads, okay? I can understand a department, as a department head, okay? If you ask the department, would you like five bosses or would you like one boss? Who was gonna say they want five bosses? Everybody's gonna say-
Could I correct that, though? They don't have five bosses.
Thank you.
They have one board of selectmen because we can operate independently. I can't tell any department head what to do. I have no authority to do that. It's one board. It's one vote. That's the only, they have one boss.
That's right. So does that issue go away?
I don't know, but I just wanted to correct that one thing. They don't answer to five, five individuals.
No, you're absolutely right.
But they have to read the tea leaves of the five individuals because that's, that's a reality.
And that, and that, that is, that is a fair, that is fair.
Listen, no matter where you are in life, no matter where you are at work, no matter what type of business you have, you have to read the tea leaves of anybody that's got anything that has to do with your life.
But going back to where we started from, Selectman Gross has said, by the way, if you're trying to communicate this out, he's saying, here are some of the pros. And, and I think he's correct in saying that if you have reservations, we don't even have to call them cons, we can call them reservations. You know, here are some of the reservations one might have. I, I, I would believe that is, if I was to go and vote on anything, be it a fire truck, a, a, a dump truck, I'm gonna look at what the pros are and I'll look at what the reservations may be in case you don't like the word con because of the negative, negative, negative connotation to it. But that's what you, that's what you look at. Everyone does it. I mean, you do it in business, you know? And that's what, that's what we do. We look at the pros and the, pros and the cons. It might be return on investment. You know, we look at all these different, different features. I think he has a, I think he's correct. If we, if last year, this was put out to dry saying not enough time to get the public involved to bring, to put it on an article, that was the piece. And it was pushed away and it, and it died. I made it a point to talk earlier about it beginning of summer and we said, wait, we'll touch it in the fall. We came back in the fall again and here's where we are, trying to say that we would like to see an article go forward to let the public choose. Now that's where I stand with that. And I under, and I can respect and understand the other board members' opinion on this. And all we're asking for, at least, and I, and I believe, uh, Selectman Campus Council said, and I said it greatly, let's have some public input to get a better feel on this. And so thus comes out, well, what are we talking about? I think it's correct. You get an article out there, it talks about what this, you know, um, it, it talks about what, you know, uh, the pros and the cons. And people, if someone decides to come in and speak to it, they'll come in and speak.
But what I would like to be able to do is ask board members, what are your expectations of a town manager, former government? What are your expectations?
I, I think we've articulated that the whole night. Greater consistency, uh, in terms of the message, because right now the message is garbled.
What message?
What?
What message?
I think the vision of, of what, of what needs to get done. I mean, the budget is a, is a prime example of that. Like where was the, really where was the, the direction? And I, and I, and when I say that, I say that politely in the sense that if we have a goal of, um, a certain percentage, et cetera, and you, you give that goal to a town manager, that town manager will then work with all the departments and they will hit that goal. Um, as it stands now, it's like, well, here's my reason for doing it. Here's my, and I think, I think it would be more streamlined, you know, for us.
Well, I don't understand how a town manager is gonna be different if it was a town manager sitting there when these five people can't even get their five minds together to say the town manager's gonna do a better job.
Oh, I do. And I, I mean, I mean, it's kind of ironic that we're talking about a canine. I mean, my gosh, is that something that this board really needs to get involved with, a dog?
Well, I, I guess, see, that's a difficulty that I have.
I know.
That's a donation and that would come up to us.
Well, you would have skipped this part and just gone to a public hearing.
I mean, I just, I, I mean, there's a lot of things that we, that we do, quite frankly, that I, I question, like, why?
And some might say, and I've heard this from the public who watches, some might say, I don't believe you had that long a conversation on some of the things that we do have that are small like that. It's, it's, sometimes it's act, you know, it's, it's kind of amazing. And what, I mean, in finishing, is that, so one would speak to, you know, how responsive are we? Is the message clear? Do we have a single point of contact? Does it, does it create synergy? Do we have innovation coming through? I, I think those are the things you get out of this. Those are the things you have to look forward to. That's the leadership challenge and I, you know, like, and once again, I'll go, I'll go back towards this resistance to change. It's, resistance to change, there's nothing wrong with that. It's, it's automatic. It's good because it gives that reservation. But it's, it's, it's going through this vetting process and that's what we're looking for, forward in this public comment.
Nick? That sounds good. Give me an example. Give me an example under the current system and under a town manager.
I'll, I'll give you a good, I, I, I won't give specifics, but I'll give, I, 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 I devise the way I look at it. And, and part of it is that we have our committee meetings and we go and meet with our department heads. And once, okay? Department head speaks with you as a representative of the board. Then that representative of the board goes back and we have a board meeting and then we talk about it and then we may act on it or we may go back to that prospective, uh, department head. Is that fair? And so you, you, I, I just look at the amount of time taken with that, that, that there are some things that it might make sense and there are other things that we should have moved much quickly. The other thing is-
See, I don't, I don't understand what you're saying. What type of things, what type of things are you referring to?
I would have talked about, I think this canine was just, was just a perfect example of one of those. I think also when you have, eh, when you have, when you take, when you take your department heads, okay? We, we currently have, you know, let's say we, we take our departments. Each one is a silo within itself. I think the group is talented. I think they're very good. But in the end, you know, when you have styles, there, there's, there is that peace there that they're committed primarily to their group. Is that fair? And what you'll have from that town administrator is someone who's looking at the overall pictures, picture looking at thing, you know what? It's, it's about resources. It's about, it's about financial resources. It's about human resources. How do we, how do we use, utilize them at the best time and moments? And what's transitioning within the, in other words, within our environment? And you won't have, it, it, it breaks down those protectionism part pieces. I mean, you, 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 you're in the fire department.
I, I understand. I mean, there's a lot of-
There's a lot of that in there, yes.
Ethereal kind of terms going on, but I, I still see that occurring now. And I kind of heard something about employing, the employment, hiring a police officer, hiring this, hiring that. As a board, let's say we had a town manager. We could say to the town manager, as policy, budget's tight. We want any new hires to be run through the board. Could we not? If we're hiring a vacancy, that's already funded, that's okay. But anybody new, we want to know about it. Or we could, as a policy, say, you know what? We don't know if we're gonna make the bottom line at the end of the year. We want to be notified before you hire anybody. No different than what we're doing now.
I'll give you an inter-
Termination, if I could. Currently, the only thing we see is an employee status form. We've never asked a department head to come in and say, we have to approve your termination. Technically, we do, but unless it's in the signature folder, that's probably the extent of our involvement. No difference with a town manager, other than we probably wouldn't see the employee status form.
No, it's a one-week delay. I'm just saying, everything is delayed a week.
You know the problem, you know what I'm hearing? I'm hearing that there's a general, general unhappiness about the way that wheels of government work. Wheels of government are not supposed to work so fast that people pick up the newspaper and all these things have happened already. Every week, these big changes, okay? They're not supposed to work that way. If it frustrates you, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. Supposed to be like that.
No, I, I disagree.
So is that one of your, is that one of your pros not to have this because we need to be slow?
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be that.
No.
I mean, I just want to make sure you heard this correctly. So you're saying, well, the reason not to do that is because we're supposed to be slow and cumbersome? I mean, did I get that correctly?
No, no, no.
Okay, I want to make sure I didn't hear, I mean-
The definition of government is checks and balances.
I, I know, I know, but it's between slow and cumbersome anyway.
But that, that's what I'm hearing, that there's a general frustration that things take too long to do. The chief came in here, we had a discussion about a canine, it's done. It's no big deal. It took five minutes.
So if, 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 when we are able to resume our discussion on old business, I'm gonna bring up a subject that we've discussed for two meetings before. I'm gonna bring it up again tonight and ask for a decision.
I'm gonna delay it another month, just for the spider.
But sometimes I, that's, sometimes I get the sense that we want to do this because, you know, we, we sit here and we discuss something for an hour. And sometimes, because I heard a comment, you know, it's thoughtful. We, we, we wring everything out. It's like the saw, process of making sausage. Sometimes it seems like we're going around and around, but we typically will not make a decision until we've tried to flush out all the various aspects to it. And it's, it's deliberative, it's thoughtful. Sometimes it's monotonous. Sometimes we're sitting here till 11 o'clock. But I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. And I go back to what I said earlier. What is it that we're gonna do with all of our free time that we're gonna suddenly discover? And you mentioned economic development. Are we gonna go out with developers and walk sites with them? Are we going to all join the Chamber of Commerce and, you know, invite developers? I mean, what is it tangibly that we're gonna do with all this free time?
Well, you know, personally, I feel that fundamentally, I think our whole pay matrix needs a ton of work and that's never been done as to what, what we do. We talk about pay and benefits and all those things.
But what's stopping us from doing that now? And don't say we don't have time.
Because, yeah, I think it is that.
Well, we went all summer getting out at seven thirty, trying to see who would get out.
That's, that's, that's not true.
It was, it wasn't all summer. It was a couple times.
It was the majority of the summer we got out early. Eight o'clock, eight thirty, nine o'clock at the most occasion. But I'm saying, we've had time. If we really, if we want to say, you know, we're gonna be here till 10 o'clock every night and as soon as we, we're done with our business, we're gonna tackle the pay matrix.
Well, I think, I think these types of, a board like that focuses more on policies, not on the actual day-to-day operation. And that's really the fundamental difference, is that, you know, a, a board of selectmen or a town council focuses more on their policies, whether it be pay policies, human resource policies, uh, you name it. You're focusing on-
Name it, please.
What?
Pay policies, personnel policies, what else?
You have a computer use policy, which we need to revamp with this whole thing with, with the internet. You have, which we haven't started yet. Um, I mean, the, those, uh, purchasing policies, financial policies, you know?
They should be reviewed and you will remember all the policies we have.
I'm just saying.
How long have we talked just about vehicle usage policy? I mean, I mean, regarding, I mean, we talked about that for three years and I don't remember anything being done yet. To me, that was-
What fault is that? We've talked about it. It's come up and we've decided not to touch it.
I blame the chairman.
Well, then you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting Thursday morning, 9:00 AM and we're gonna start talking about the, the use policies.
I mean, in some ways, if you want to look at-
We know you won't be there.
Hey, they only, only blame yourselves.
You're hard pressed to be here at six.
You could have a board who very easily says, you know, policy next year, budget is gonna be a zero percent increase. That's it. You're the town manager. You make it work. But now we have to sit and meet with every department head and go over their budgets and then at the end of the day say, you know what? That probably wasn't a good book, policy. Because we firsthand have seen what is required in our departments and why they need the budgets that they need. And so sometimes having a town manager makes a board's job easier because we just say, you know, this is the policy. You go out and do it. And we're separated from that.
Town manager works with you with just that realistic policy.
Not always that case.
I'll send you a turn.
No, he ever-
No, no. Dave has something.
Do you have a second?
Dave?
Under old business. We are still on old business.
Well, wait, before, can I apologize? Before we go old business, uh, it's only because we had it out on the table here. Are we going to set a date for open, for, for comment, for public comment regarding this? That's all I want to know at this point in time.
Yeah, can we just do the first meeting in December? And if people show up, they show up. If they don't, we, we'll try. We'll, we'll, we'll try to get in the paper, do whatever we can, but it's, is there any harm in doing that?
How about we set two dates? One in November and one in December.
I'm good.
And then we'll give people two opportunities to come.
Excellent.
Love it.
And we'll get a chance to kind of hone our message for the second.
So with that being said, let's set the dates.
November 21st and December 5th.
Sounds perfect.
Thank you. Now, I'd love to hear what Selectman Pierce has to say.
Uh, I'm your, uh, representative on the SOAR Commission. And so I like to discuss the continuation of the, uh, SOAR project in Purnardville, Mass. Road. That contract called for, uh, final paving of the trenches. Whether we all under, whether the SOAR Commission all understood that two and a half years ago or whether we understood it, that's what the contract was written for. Uh, final paving of the trenches. Starting about three months ago, we became aware, the SOAR Commission became aware and we became aware that, um, the trenches are physically so close together, it would be more beneficial to repave all Mass. Road, curb to curb. SOAR Commission, who is in charge of this project, they got the financial, understand all the financial information together. And the, they have agreements, they have, uh, permission from the, uh, state level to oversee the, the funding for the project to proceed that, uh, curb to curb repaving could be undertaken with the federal money. It's not outside the, the scope of how the contract would read. However, that cost is gonna go a hundred thousand dollars over what the federal grant is. The SOAR Commission, uh, discussed last week that they would like to share, they would like the town to share with that cost fifty-fifty. And so, I would like the board to agree that out of next year's road plan, uh, you be aware that, uh, DPW would put into that project fifty thousand dollars out of the road plan. And, uh, we, this needs to be a, a board decision so that the SOAR Commission can proceed with modifying their contract.
What, didn't Carl discuss that last week with us?
Yeah, he did, but we did not make a decision.
Okay.
So, um, that's where we stand. We need to give our position quickly, because we've just been discussing quickness of decisions. Do we support the SOAR Commission on this? And, uh, are we willing to commit fifty thousand dollars of next year's road funds?
Can you, I'm sorry.
If Carl came to us and said, we have an opportunity to pave a road at fifty percent of the cost because of a federal grant, wouldn't we agree to that? And.
Usually we would.
I'm sure Mass Road is on the road plan.
Yeah, this is, in this case, uh, the extra amount of money to do curb-to-curb paving, uh, is going above the two and a half million dollar limit. Some of it will be covered within the two and a half million dollar limit, but a hundred thousand dollars is beyond it.
And they're willing to put up the fifty?
The SOAR Commission is willing to put up fifty thousand, they're asking the town to put up the other fifty thousand, and, uh, the money would be from next year's road plan money.
Can you tell me where that's, from what point to, just so I have a good clarification, from what point to what point?
Like landmarks, is that from, uh, Ollies? I mean, Ollies, um, I'm sorry, Bob Nadas?
Mass Line.
It started, the construction started at, uh, Manchester Line.
The Manchester Line?
Yeah.
Manchester Line all the way to?
Daniel Plummer.
So, all that for fifty thousand?
Yes.
That includes raising the manholes.
It's more than that, but a hundred thousand is not covered.
Right, I understand that.
So it's a lot more than just fifty thousand, that, that's only our cost.
All right. There's a good portion that is buried within the two and a half million.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Thank you, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you for the quick decision tonight.
And we did it without a town manager.
For a public hearing.
Now, um, I have another item that potentially could be old business, but in my mind, the last time we, the last time we touched it, it was in a, discussing it under, uh, non-public under legal. And so, um, I have some information I'd like to present to the board.
Is it non-public info?
Non-public. Last time we touched this subject, it was, uh, legal.
All right, well, then let's hold off and do that.
I don't believe it is.
Is it this?
Yes.
That's what it is.
That's not non-public, though.
Right.
Then, um.
It's results of the study.
Then I'll bring it up under old business.
Okay.
And it's because we've asked Public Works to give this board an estimate on providing what it would cost to provide a, a one-way slip lane to go from Wallace Road onto Worfley Hill Road.
Is it a slip lane? It's not a slip lane.
Well, it's a one-way lane entering Worfley Hill. You, Sue distributed to us, uh, a spreadsheet of costs, and, uh, I'm gonna give you some modifications and very round numbers. If we were to put in a gravel road for that lane, it would be twenty-two thousand dollars. And on your sheet, that's the first, uh, cost analysis. If at some point later, one year later, two years later, three years later, we wanted to pave that gravel lane, it would, at right now, it would add eleven thousand dollars. That's the change in the figures that you have before you on the handheld. So it would be eleven thousand. So if you add those two packages together, over time, potentially, it could be thirty-three million dollars.
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three. Excuse me.
That's expensive.
It's getting late.
That's a couple of years' road pro, program.
Thirty-three thousand dollars. The last box is what would it cost if we paved, you know, did all the landscaping and paved it right off the bat under one project, and it adds up to thirty-one thousand? So, the bottom line is that if you spread it out over two projects, slightly more expensive. And I think we asked the DPW to look at both options. Could you put in a real quick gravel lane? That would facilitate the one-way traffic and plowing issues?
Just a, just a comment, I, I appreciate the numbers. I think one of the things the board would have to discuss with Public Works and make a decision on, are we doing, is this a contracted price? Or is this an in-house price? I mean, you've got soft costs and hard costs, mobilization.
This is a con.
This is a contract, right.
This is a contact, contract price. Um, our in-house staff is busy, your other projects, we've already laid on them. So this is a contract project.
But will they be done there? They, I assume they'll be done their projects before, you know, by Thanksgiving, when the asphalt plants close?
Well, that's, if asphalt plants are closed, we got this first one, which is build a gravel road.
Right, but we do it in-house, and how much would it be?
Fourteen thousand if you take out the.
You, you take out the mobilization.
Common excavation, rough grading, fine grading, remove existing granite curb, transplant existing trees.
You would have some, some asphalt on edges of the existing road.
Exactly, yeah, that would be there, crush gravel would be there, bank run would be there. The frame and grate would be there.
You'd have a.
Lome and seed, I would imagine, the loame we remove would probably be reused.
Eighteen-inch pipe would have to be bought.
Yep.
Some frames, grates.
I think you'd probably bring that down to about fourteen thousand, thirteen thousand dollars, done in-house.
You asked him to bring these four, these figures forward, so I'm presenting them for the board for discussion. I'm not making any discussion at this point what to do with the values.
These could also be done next year. I mean, there's, there's nothing that says we have to do this this year.
Correct. Correct. Thank you for allowing me to present this information.
Okay. Thank you for getting it.
Thank you. I do have a, uh, non-public item under, uh, compensation I would like to present to the board. That's, uh, RSA ninety-one A, three, Roman two.
Uh, so before we go into non-public, though, I'd like to just finish up, make sure if there's any other old business and finish up with our public. We have a couple of committee reports, and then we can do that, because we're.
Excuse me for jumping, uh, too efficiently ahead.
Good question.
Nick?
We, we had an item come up a while ago regarding, um, using municipal funds on private roads. Is that discussion still in non-public, or, I don't know if we've taken, ever taken any action on that?
I don't know, I don't remember. I, I don't believe we've made any.
No action has been taken.
Action.
There, there should be action on that.
Except referring it to legal counsel.
I mean, we're not, we have a couple of roads where, that are private roads where we're performing, which we're not allowed to do.
Uh, wait a minute, I thought we had a legal, we had a question. I thought there was something that was supposed to come out of that, that we would be.
The board didn't make a decision to send it to legal, or to have a letter drafted?
We did, right?
It has been, it has been sent to legal, we have not received a letter yet.
So we need to wait for that? Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Anything else? Okay. Committee reports. Historic District Commission did meet, we had a public hearing for the, um, application of, or, or re-application of letters from, uh, early eighteen hundreds on the historic, uh, historical society building, which we had a public hearing, and that was approved. And outside of just some of the regular business and going over a few, uh, of the, uh, regular items that we do, that was pretty much the HDC meeting. So, uh.
Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, uh, met last week. Uh, first off, I just want to express my condolences, uh, our director, Rick Willhelmy, his father passed away over the weekend. So I want to express our condolences to Rick and his family. Parks and Rec, uh, met, they, they talked briefly about the, uh, process by which, uh, they did a, they did a site walk of the, uh, property that we purchased, and they're, they're talking through that process of, of holding a community forum. Actually, they're gonna hold two forums. One of them is gonna be with a facilitator, and the other one's gonna be without a facilitator. They're gonna do the one without the facilitator first, because it costs more money to have this guy up here at both. Again, to try to, um, you know, see what the community is looking for. Kind of, um, we had already, the, the commission had already planned it, and I, I did pass along Collis's name and, and, um, Kurt Lauer's name to the, to the commission, to, to get them involved in, in the process. Uh, they are also going to be discussing adjustments to their fees, and that will come, um, in next year, because the, the fees, it's pretty much, uh, March is when they pretty much change their fees. It's the first big program, it's lacrosse typically, so there really wasn't a rush to try to get it done by the end of the year, because to try to have a January one date, because they really don't, uh, make any adjustments, it would only be probably till March. So they, they, they did talk about that as well. And, um, you know, the, the board was, uh, the commission was pleased with a lot of the accomplishments that were done of this past year to the parks with respect to the pools and, uh, some of the, the other areas. They are looking, you know, as you, as you know, through the budget, to try to improve, uh, to fix the pavilions and do some other things. And, uh, and overall, uh, that was about it. Trying to think, uh, Brian Lewis is the newest budget committee rep, and he is now the liaison. And, um, I do believe that is it. And I also have, um, something to bring up in non-public with respect to Parks and Rec. Just reminded.
Any questions with Scott on Parks and Rec? Library.
Want to do it? No, it's just. Library Board, uh, they met on Thursday, and the library board trustees, uh, voted Sue Plant as their vice chair. There was an empty vacancy. They voted on to approve the two thousand twelve budget, which, and the presentation, which we all saw on Saturday, which was given by Mike and Diane. And Michael York, the state librarian, met regarding, uh, issues with the state van delivery. And I believe that was to increase the weekly visits, is that correct?
No, the problem is the state legislature's.
Not funding?
It has requested that they cut or reexamine the use of federal funds, which has underwritten the interlibrary loan system of van deliveries, and it's having an impact on patron use across the state.
Okay, okay, just so I get a, and I'm glad you're here, because I, my understanding of that was that they were coming twice a week, and now they're coming once a week, is that what, is this the one?
Goffstown has impacted going from, I, I'm not sure if we're twice or three times.
Okay.
Because of our Gmail's association, we are, heavily use and rely on the interlibrary loan system. Gmail's has done it very, very efficiently and well, kind of as a model for the state, but it's now causing the state to think we do it too.
Okay, and the last but not least, they.
Efficiency doesn't always sell.
All right, and they voted on their twenty-twelve library calendar holidays. Will there be pictures in this calendar? Like Book of the Month?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Okay, any questions to Steve?
We can ask Tessie's maybe.
Budget?
We met Saturday, you were all there.
I.
If, if you need me to provide you with a recap, uh, I'll talk to you later. No, no, in all seriousness, for those, uh, listening or watching, um, on television, we met with the budget committee at Goffstown High School from nine to about three PM, where each department head and, and, and working with the selectmen presented their budgets. And we will start deliberation, not deliberations, we're gonna start, um, discussing the budget starting tomorrow. And then we'll do it again Thursday, and then every Tuesday, Thursday, um, for both school and town.
All right, is there any other public business? If not, entertain a motion for a non-public, and after our non-public, we'll probably adjourn.
Non-public, uh, meeting for compensation, RSA ninety-one A, three, Roman two. Paragraph, parentheses, A, for compensation.
And, uh, I will, just so, before we, I second that. Um, I will be entering for, um, adversely impact the reputation of someone other than the board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, roll call?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Okay, we're a non-public.